The October 21st meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. Please stand. The invocation remains standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Rodvian, you have the floor.
I'm very pleased to introduce, giving our invitation this evening, one of our community leaders here in Annapolis, Reverend Dr. Carletta Allen from the Asbury United Methodist Church in Annapolis.
This is awkward having my back to you. So even though it's directed up there, please know that this is for all of us. Holy One, we thank you for gathering us together once more to do the work that we call governing. We come into hallowed halls like this looking for justice, for right, for truth. And we admit that we struggle sometimes because there are so many varying opinions about what is right and just and true. So we pray wisdom for these we have elected, our servants and our friends and neighbors. Guide them in all that they do. Grant them ears to hear not only the facts and the statistics, but also the outcries, the weeping, and the sadness behind those numbers. Remind us that we are here because you have put us together in a community called Anarondle County, and what a great place this is. Make us worthy of the task of living and governing in this place, we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, everyone, to the October 21st meeting. Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked, and I advise you, that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Rodvian, do we have a presentation or not? I know there was a discussion.
I believe it will be another day.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move forward to invitation to audience. This is where members of the audience who signed up before the meeting can address the county council briefly on any subject not included in this printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do want to read a statement because there was a misnomer in the press, and I need to make this clear. I know there were people that read that tonight's bill, 6819 for Forest Con, was another public hearing. That is not the case. So I want to make that absolutely clear. The bill could be up for vote tonight, but there could be amendments. It could be amended tonight. Obviously, we'll see how that goes. But the amended bill will come back for hearing on November 4th, and at that time, people can testify. So I just want to remind everyone, if you're coming off the invitation to audience, you will not be allowed to speak on that bill just because, you know, it was printed, whatever else. I just want to make that clear in terms of the rules. All right. Now that we got that out of the way, we are going to call up the first five folks, and you can just come up here. And again, you'll state your name, your address, in two minutes, and let's go from there. Nancy Jakins, Kevin Jackson. Again, I'm trying to do the best I can, the way these are written. Onak Marshall, Jana Manifeld, and it looks like Brian Trott. If you all would come forward. And again, for the folks who signed up after that, this is the first panel. We'll go through it, name, address, in two minutes. And we're going to start with Ms. Nancy Jakins, so you can start there.
Hi. Mr. Don?
Oh, she keeps hitting it, you're hitting it.
Let me do it.
Yeah, we'll handle it.
There you go. Okay.
Here we go.
Thank you for giving me this time to speak. My name is Nancy Jenkins, and I'm a former member, I don't want to put my glasses on the wrong, county commission on disability issues. Some of you may not know that county executive Pittman has disbanded the commission completely. He sent us all a letter back in August. Disability is not political, nor should it be, nor should the commission be. Yet, because of the political machinations of the prior and current county executive, it's become so. Disability is a one-minority group that anybody can become a member of at any time. It has no respect for politics, race, gender, or any of the other categories. When county executive Pittman was first elected, the commission, of whom several members were waiting to be reappointed because their terms had run out, were told that they would all be reappointed. So imagine our surprise when we received a letter from county executive disbanding the commission and dismissing all 21 voting members. No other county executive has done this in our 25-year history. I believe his action, the county executive violates the county code and the county charter. The charter provides the county executive appoints member and dismisses them for cause. We were not given a reason for the dismissal, and I do not believe there was a cause for such a dismissal. Generally, the reason and cause required is so that politicians can't appoint people for political reasons. I believe his dismissal was illegal and should be invalid, and it violates the code and charter in several ways. The code requires that the commission members are appointed for three years, and the members that are...
Can she finish her statement? Briefly.
Oh, okay. Three years, and they're supposed to hold over until they're replaced. We haven't had a meeting since last June. We were supposed to all be appointed by September, and, like I said, we haven't met since June. There are more points, but I have written testimony that you guys can look at later.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Kevin Jackson, how are you, sir?
Good morning. Good evening, sir. Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Jackson. The association address is PO Box 42, Shady Side, Maryland. I am the president of South County Youth Association. I'm also a six-year former at-large member of the Board of Education of Anarondle County, so I've served this county publicly. I know of over half of you on this council and appreciate the relationship or familiarity we have and the common bond for kids and their well-being and growth as children. I come tonight asking you to consider the inequity of funding for youth athletics across South County. We need your help in future budgets and policy discussions. I have spoken to you, Ms. Pickard, about the lack of Bermuda and turf fields in South County. Outside of Southern High School, we have nothing in South County. I have discussed with you and sent you pictures, Mr. Pruski, of the poor conditions of county contracted urinals, or porta-pots, that blow over in our county parks on weekends, and no emergency response plan from the county recreation and parks department exists. I have even volunteered my personal time with you, Ms. Hare, to drive you all over South County in District 7 to walk the sad conditions and the inequities for our kids in South County. And so, you ask, why? Why spend all the time in volunteerism? Why spend the hours out on the pitch or on the fields of football, lacrosse, or field hockey? Why wake up at 2:00 a.m. to ensure the irrigation system works as reported by the county government, and it doesn't? We do it for the kids. SCY is the only county-accredited youth sports organization south of Highway 214. We have cognizance of all youth sports to include football, tennis, basketball, soccer, wrestling, cheer, lacrosse, footsle, volleyball, softball, and field hockey. Many of our sports commissioners are here tonight because they care, like you, about kids. I'll summarize. They have stories from out in the field that you need to hear. If you want to close the achievement gap in our schools, it is tax-paying volunteers like SCY that are here tonight that are free of charge to you in the Board of Education. Having said that, we need your help and support with the county executive's assistance in our journey.
Thank you.
Today, the playing field is not equitable, and we need you to help change that condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Moving along, Eric Marshall, is that how it's pronounced? I'm sorry.
Arvac.
All right, okay, sorry.
My name is Arvac Marshall, and I've been coaching for over 25 years and at Southern for the last 15. As our dedicated commissioners, coaches, parents, and volunteers of South County continue to grow our sports programs, we need your help to improve and expand our facilities. Sports improve the physical and mental health of children. Sports improve body image, posture, self-confidence, concentration, focus, mood, memory, and sleep habits while reducing stress, depression, and anxiety. These benefits have a positive effect on education, which will affect the future of our community, state, nation, and world. Fields and gyms are the last classroom of the day where we teach some of the most important life lessons to our youth. Sports teach the importance of being a good teammate, striving together to achieve something greater and not possible all alone. Sports coaches build and shape the character of their players, teaching them how to care, love, and serve others. Sports develop grit and resilience, helping children learn how to grow through struggle. Sports develop leadership of self, leadership of those above, and leadership of those whose care they haven't been entrusted with. Sports improve critical thinking and problem-solving skills influencing all areas of life. Sports are fun and allow children to play and build friendships. Like school classrooms, you can only put so many children in each class before learning becomes difficult and, in some cases, dangerous. Across the county, when you outgrow your capacity, a new school such as Crofton needs to be built. When facilities are outdated and breaking down, you upgrade and repair to improve safety and usefulness. We need your help to expand and improve our facilities to allow the youth of South County to experience all the benefits associated with youth sports. You can help them become strong future leaders, coaches, parents, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Jana?
My name is Jana.
Can we move over the other microphone, please?
Sure. Can we share?
Yes. A little technical difficulty, sorry.
That's okay.
There we go.
My name is Jana Manifeld. My address is PO Box 42 in Shady Side, Maryland. I am currently the treasurer of South County Youth Association, better known throughout South County as SCYA. I have lived in Deal community all of my life, and I have never spoken before in front of this council. I do today asking for the consideration of the inequity of youth sports funding to our county of South County for the last two decades. Oops, totally lost my place. My function with SCYA, specifically the management of financial books, to include registration payments, insurance policies, payments for our kids, and tax payments to ensure our 501(c)(3) nonprofit business remains in good standing with the Maryland Department of Assessment, Taxation, and the IRS. There is a business side to this volunteerism that we do not take lightly, and we take it wholeheartedly and very seriously. It is a lot of volunteer hours and organization, and we do it all for our kids. We do it and prepare and propel our kids forward to tomorrow. Our children live in the most rural part of this county and struggle, like most areas of the county, but we don't get the necessary attention and haven't for decades because we are south of 214 and don't say very much. Well, that has changed. We need your help as a council. It is a sports program that we offer through SCYA that can help track the achievement gap in the schools. It is SCYA in Anarondle County Park and Rec Accreditation User Group in South County to keep the kids away from improper use of narcotics like fentanyl. It is SCYA that can teach through positive sports programs and understand speed.
Thank you. Can you please summarize real quick?
We're good.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know, and just a reminder, I should have said this before, there's a clock up here that gives the timing, and we would try and stick to it because there's other people. I want to have you finish. We're all respectful, but, you know, just try and get in there if you can because there's other people waiting as well. Thank you, sir. Mr. Trot.
Good evening. My name is Brian Trot, and I reside in Deal, Maryland, and I've come to speak on behalf of South County Youth Association. I've been a resident of South County for 23-plus years and been involved at every level of our organization as a parent, coach, commissioner, past president, and current secretary. During that time, I watched our community grow, not just our surroundings throughout the area, but also the generations of children as they have participated in youth activities through the years and onwards to the high school and collegiate levels. I've had the opportunity to watch my son and his generation through those periods, and I now have the opportunity to follow my daughter and her generation, her future generations, as well through their youth experience and activities in South County. With each new generation of youth participants, the need for updated facilities, more field and gym space in our area, as well as better equipment and structures, becomes ever so important. As a nonprofit organization, we can only provide so much. As we move forward, but without additional resources, we will continue to fall short of what other areas of our county can provide. As we continue to build the culture within South County youth sports to promote a fun and competitive learning experience, it is with the utmost importance that we also build our facilities as we work to include more lighted fields to ensure adequate practice time and provide more turf fields to ensure more practice time can be accomplished, as well as provide updated structures and field maintenance to ensure that the youth of South County are afforded the same opportunities as those in the northern half of our beautiful county enjoy. This all requires additional county funding for our organization so we can build for the future as we address the present while upgrading fields, adding more indoor facilities, more lighted fields, and updating park structures to ensure and experience our youth will never forget as their generation and others come up through the youth sports programs of South County Youth Association. I part with this, South County is the farthest point south and last area passed through before leaving Anarondle County. We want everyone to be just as proud of our area of the county as we are, as we attract, retain, and develop the youth of today, tomorrow, and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the panels, this is Mr. Jackson. You did send me an email. I sent it to Park and Recs. Did you get a response? And was the porta potty moved? That's what I'd like to know.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We'll follow up again. I'd like to come out and visit. So, thank you all for the panel. Appreciate it. Oh, sorry. No, I have more invitation to audience. Let's wait until after. Okay. We're going to call up the next group for invitation to audience. Thank you again to that panel. Phil Tito, Chrissy Holt, Art Holt, Ray Bowen, Kim Breen, and I'm going to do the best I can. It looks like Deborah Lucy, and I can't, not sure what the HI, not really sure, Annapolis, Maryland, if you've come forward. Is there a Deborah in the audience? Okay, sorry. So, Mr. Tito, you're first. Name, address, two minutes.
Philip Tito, 1800 Poplar Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. Hello again. If you forgot me, I'm back again to urge you to take up and pass a resolution asking Congress and our Maryland reps to pass the Medicare-for-All Single-Payer Bill. You know, years back, I went to an environmental protest at the White House, and as we were encircling the White House, there was a black gentleman with a sign that read, "Would white people care more about black people if we were a tree?" A few white people asked me what the sign meant, as they just did not get it. But not unironically, we're in that very situation here in our county and no doubt in other locales around the country, where people who are most marginalized and are suffering the most in our communities are told once again that their situation is not important enough to be addressed or even discussed. And to be clear, I'm not saying the Forest Conservation Act is not important. I get it. You probably have a full slate of things you want to be taking up by the council, such as the Forest Conservation Act or a bill, and are thinking about reelection. What if you're wrong? What if my constituents don't support it? Single payer isn't radical. Most Americans, two-thirds, support single payer system, and oftentimes, those that don't on both sides of the political spectrum do after it's explained to them. You aren't even really sticking your neck out. You're just getting in line with the average person. And single payer systems are working and have worked in other countries around the world much better than our current system. And the only developed country without a universal healthcare system has long since time we passed it. Since some of you seem so worried about reelection, keep in mind that, like yard signs, trees don't vote. And although the people that support the trees do, we can't vote if we're dead or bedridden. The organization I work for was founded during the Iraq War with the goal of giving congressional Democrats a spine, but unfortunately, as we can see, that didn't happen. Here were some of the last hopes I have for our system, that local elected officials, being the closest to the people, can take the moral stand and do something without having to be strongly pressured to do so. I sincerely hope you don't dash my hopes, but if history is any indicator, I should be prepared to be disappointed.
Thank you, sir.
So I have an open invitation for you to learn more about single payer.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out.
Ms. Holt?
Hi. My name is Chrissy Holt, 8 Fisk Circle, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here in support of a Medicare-for-All resolution for Anarondle County. I'm also the co-chair of the Healthcare Task Force for Progressive Maryland, and I'm a leader at Maryland Progressive Healthcare Coalition. On Tuesday, we delivered 2.2 million signatures to the six remaining Democrats in the House of Representatives, including Trump, and, excuse me, not Trump, Hoyer, who has not signed on to the Medicare-for-All Act of 2019, of which those 2 million signatures, 2,000 of them came from Anarondle County. There is definitely support. Two-thirds of the Americans support Medicare-for-All, and the resolution that we are asking you to sign on to will be partly read in a minute, but it's just stating that you believe that healthcare is a human right, and every single citizen inside Anarondle County deserves access to the quality care. So, we have asked a couple of times for the healthcare costs inside Anarondle County. We haven't been able to get them, but I'm going to read to you Maryland numbers. We have 355,000 Marylanders who are uninsured, of which 73% of them are minorities. This is pure racial disparity, and Medicare-for-All can help solve this issue. 73% of Maryland's uninsured are minorities. 64% of the uninsured have a high school diploma or less. 87% of the uninsured are working families. 36 of the uninsured have a household income of less than $50,000 compared to 22% of all Maryland residents. All means all, making racial equity the cornerstone of Medicare-for-All. This is your vote. This is your time. We are happy to submit and talk further about what Medicare-for-All means in the House and what it would mean to Anarondle County. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Art?
Hi. I'm Art Holt. Chrissy and I, our address is 8 Fisk Circle here in Annapolis, and I'm going to continue where I left off last week, reading a portion of the suggested Medicare-for-All County Council Specifically, whereas because of healthcare costs, specifically co-pays and deductibles on private insurance policies, more than 40% of all U.S. adults under the age of 65 forego needed medical care, 30% fail to fill a prescription or take less than the recommended dose, and a third said they had to choose in the past year between paying food, paying for food, heating, housing, or healthcare. And that means that perhaps they have a possibility of becoming homeless right here in the county. County residents becoming homeless because of their unable to afford their healthcare, or they choose to pay for their healthcare rather than their mortgage. Whereas employer-provided health benefits are declining and employees' costs are increasing through cost shifting to workers, including increased cost of premiums for workers covered by employer-paid insurance, which have risen by an average of 65%, and deductibles that have risen by an average of 212% over the past decade. And whereas the inability to pay medical bills continues to be the cause of two-thirds of personal bankruptcies each year, right here in this county, and people who need medical care should never face bankruptcy as a result of needing care, nor should they ever face a lawsuit from a healthcare provider or hospital, such as Johns Hopkins Hospital, that is receiving millions of dollars in tax breaks and subsidies. So I just ask, please, please do consider how we've been coming here every other week, and we're happy to keep coming. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Ray Bowen?
Hi. My name is Ray Bowen, 302 Fairhaven Road, Tracy's Landing. I'm here for the inequity for South County Youth Association and the areas that we have that we do not have, like other parts of the county. I'm also the athletic director at Southern High School, so I see firsthand what we below Davisonville Road and Route 2 do not have. I coached my son in lacrosse. This past spring, I was able to go to Bell Branch Park. Beautiful, beautiful park. We have nothing like that in South County. That day, not only were both turf fields being used for lacrosse, there was a softball game, there was a baseball game, there were, every other field had soccer going on. It was their homecoming. We have nothing like that in South County, to be able to have all those sports going on at one time, to be able to just have an atmosphere that was so exciting. And I look around, and it's all those teams from the same organization. They have their ice cream trucks, they're the cotton candy. There's nothing like that for us to have down in South County. The areas that these kids play on, the fields are bumpy, injuries can happen. Arvac talked about safety. It is very important, please, if you have not taken a trip past Davisonville Road and Route 2 to see what we do not have, come with us. I'll meet Mr. Jackson also. We'll take you to the South County Cafe and have breakfast or lunch or whatever, and we'll show you what we do not have and what we do need. So please, please, we're asking you, for my feeder system to Southern High School, for these kids to have something to play on that helps them become better athletes and overall better citizens of Anarondle County. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Oh, thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Kim Breen?
Hi. My name is Kim Breen. My address is 1218 Holly Avenue, Shayside, Maryland. I'm a volunteer coach and a mother of three kids at church state in South County Youth Association. My son Connor, 12, my middle child Thomas, who is 10, and Nora, who is 6. All three of my children love SCYA, and the friendships built over the years, these relationships and teammates and coaches have built are strong in the community in South County. The organization has goodness surrounding it, but it needs your help. The county government has not been equal across the county. The field conditions in our county parks and at South County schools, along with the gym conditions, are poor compared to other areas. Yet District 7 makes up a quarter of the real property in Anarondle County. We traveled far to get here tonight and to speak to you, and I ask you to take concerns seriously and a major contribution to the budget in the fiscal year of 2021. I've never spoken before this council. I do so tonight asking you to consider the lack of the athletic youth funding of our county government as provided to South County in the last two decades. It has been equal, nor has it been equitable. I thank you for the recent 30-to-40-foot garage you finished up at Deal Park, as well as the well that you fixed last year. Those are the first major capital projects that have been contracted and finished in South County in almost two decades. We thank you, but you can do better. On a personal note, my husband and I have taken our son Thomas 45 minutes away to play travel soccer for A3, leave the community, and give our children proper playing practice fields to adapt to the sport they love. There is a fun, there is fun in all we do as coaches and volunteers for our kids. There's also a business side to this. Volunteerism that caused us to come out tonight because we take our stewardship seriously. Help us keep our kids off drugs and alcohol and in school and in the classroom, in front of teachers, and playing sports. We want to do just like you do, the very best for our children, but we need more resources and attention to do so. We thank you for your consideration at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Councilwoman Pickard?
I just want to thank the parents that came out tonight in South County. I share your pain. District 2 and the Old Mill and Glenn Burney feeder, we are in a very similar situation. So I know I've had the conversations with Councilwoman Hare, and we are tackling and looking at the inequalities across the county. But it's not just y'all. So, we're all in this together. So thank you for coming out. I know you probably had lots of other places you need to be tonight, so your message was heard. And thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'm sure you had a hand in organizing these folks.
Councilwoman Hare, did you have a question for the panelists? Or, because we still have one more person.
Perfect. I was just going to say thank you, too. It sounds like Councilwoman Pickard and I have some work we can partner on this upcoming budget season. Mr. Jackson, thank you very much for the tour of South County fields. For any other council members who might like to take a tour of the South County fields, Mr. Jackson is an excellent tour guide.
Thank you. Ms. Deborah Lucy, and I apologize last name.
That's all right. When you see it, it's not going to be any easier.
Okay. Name, address, in two minutes. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Deborah Luzetti Myers. I live at 606 Forest Hill Drive in Annapolis. I've been a resident of Anarondle County for 38 years, moving here in 1981 when my husband and I were on active duty station at the United States Naval Academy. I also am a service-connected disabled vet, and I've worked for a national veteran service organization for over 25 years. Some years ago, I sought to use my experience and volunteer to serve my local community. I was appointed to the Anarondle County Commission on Disability Issues, also known as CODI, where I served two, three-year terms actively participating on a number of committees, nominated and appointed to serve as vice chair and ultimately chair of the commission until the expiration of my second term. After the expiration of my second term, I continued to attend every meeting of CODI, providing relevant information and participating as permitted until the CODI was disbanded last July. Currently, I'm a member of the Anarondle County Veterans Affairs Commission. I can proudly tell you that the Veterans Commission is doing amazing work in the community, which used to be the case for CODI. I'm here today because I'm very concerned about what has happened to CODI and the announced future direction of CODI. Anarondle County has over 55,000 veterans, many of whom are senior citizens and/or have disabilities. In addition to the Veterans Commission, we need CODI and the Department of Aging and Disabilities to actively represent the interests of our seniors and disabled vets. I know our current county executive is interested in the work of the county commissions, as both he and his staff have been very supportive of the Veterans Commission, which is why I believe that Mr. Pittman was not made fully aware of what happened to CODI in the last few years and who, in my opinion, is responsible for those difficulties, before he sent the letter out placing CODI on hiatus, revising the responsibilities of CODI despite the provisions of the county code, and placing CODI under the control of the Department of Aging and Disabilities. I have Exhibits 1 and 2 to the handout, which are the letters that were sent out, both to the general members of the commission and to myself. And Exhibit 3 is the August 20, 2019 announcement.
Thank you. Can you please summarize?
All right. Therefore, I've got a lot of examples here. I have more that I would be happy to share with you of what actually has been happening, but I respectfully request that the county council look into the situation and ensure that the county code is adhered to.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you all. Moving on to the next group. Megan Crandall, Scott Crandall, Becca Derrick, Lee Derrick, it looks like Kelly Nutwell, and William Huggins, if you'd come forward, please. And while everyone's coming up, just a reminder, the box up front, and try and stick to the two minutes we still have to sit as the Board of Health, and there's a lot of people here for other things, so I just ask you to try and be as concise as possible. We want to hear you, but I also want to make sure we move the agenda along and show some respect for the other folks. So Ms. Crandall, Megan Crandall?
Hi, Megan Crandall. We live in Lothian. Good evening. Thank you all for taking time to hear us out this evening. I'm speaking to you tonight as a South County-born and raised member of this organization. I am a third-generation former athlete and now a third-generation coach of my four boys. My husband and I have coached over 30 teams combined in the last 10 years for SCYA. My grandparents, Jack and BB Castro, founded Shady Side Boys and Girls Club over 50 years ago. They still reside there. My grandfather coached for more than 20 years, and my grandmother went on to work as an athletic supervisor with Anarundale County Rec and Parks for 20 years. I called them this morning to ask if they had any words of wisdom to say to you tonight, and the message from their time was ironically the same as today. We want our youth to have access to the same athletic opportunities as other kids in the county. Growing up, I used to take pride in the fact that despite our bad news bears, persona of the mismatch uniforms, and the fields that were often underwater half the time, we could still compete with the larger powerhouses in the county. Now that I am a parent and a coach, I realize the inequities South County youth are up against. Teams in our organization have a tremendous amount of practice time cut short because we simply don't have enough lighted, functional, weather-resistant field space. These other teams all around us, including South River, Davidsonville, and Dunkirk, have the allure of Bermuda fields, turf fields, concession buildings, rail bathrooms, scoreboards, scoreboxes. We are losing people to these organizations because, to the average parent, those are tangible things that can elevate any level of play. No pun intended, but I simply ask that you do what you can to help us create an equal playing field for the youth of South County.
Thank you. Scott Crandall?
Hi, my name is Scott Crandall, SCYA, Lothian, Maryland. I'm not going to make it that long. You all kind of have the idea of what we're discussing here, but I do think things have been heading in the right direction, and if we can continue to work together as one and make things better for South County. But you can see by the number of people that are here, we are willing and able to take control and make our fields, our facilities, better, and we hope that you all can recognize that. So that's all for me.
Thank you, sir. Becca Derrick?
Hi. Hi, I'm Becca Derrick, Harwood, Maryland. I'm currently the JV field hockey coach at Southern High School. I was, for three years, the field hockey commissioner for SCYA, and I am entering my 16th season coaching field hockey and lacrosse for SCYA. We have three children who play for SCYA. I'm here, obviously, to ask what everybody before me has asked for equitable funds. Field hockey, for those of you who may or may not be familiar, is a completely different sport on grass and on turf. And when we try to compete against schools like Severna Park, who have multiple fields, not just at the school, but then two miles away at Kinder Farm Park, it's just not equitable. Our girls are passionate. They're small, but they're fierce. We have been told by Parks and Rec that our facilities, they're not going to schedule games at Southern because we don't have the facilities. In my 16, almost 16 seasons, we've had approximately 160 field hockey and lacrosse games, and I have played two of them at Southern because Parks and Recs will not schedule games there because we don't have the facilities, and that is simply not fair. We have been told by Parks and Recs that our home field is South River, and that is not our home field. And perhaps to most people, that doesn't seem like a big deal, but when you're putting your heart and soul into sports, and you try, and then you're told another school is your home field, it's just not fair. And our players want and deserve to have an opportunity to not have their first home game be in high school. Thank you.
Ma'am, what do you coach? What level?
Everything. I have coached from four up till varsity. Currently, I'm coaching JV field hockey.
Bless you. I know it's not easy because my daughter is on the team, and I hear what you're saying because we have to drive to Annapolis and Northeast to play our games.
Yes. We've had all our games, we've played at Chesapeake, we've played Old Mill, we've played everywhere but at Southern. Never, I've never coached a field hockey game at Southern High School, and this is my eighth season. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee?
Lee Derrick, nine, Bethel Lane, Harwood, Maryland. Just quickly to share, so Northeast has at least two turf fields at the school. Old Mill had a turf field a billion years ago. They have a second, they've replaced it, and Southern, we just got our first turf field. So I just want to make it very clear, we are like the petulant stepchild that the county doesn't care about, and we have been, as Ms. Crandall pointed out, for years. That's how it feels to us. And so I understand that, you know, you all have to travel down to South River, but Southern is another 10 minutes. That's our home field. It's really, really important. So some data on our schools. 2018-19 Farms data. Lothian has 49.8% of the kids, that's one of the schools that feeds in, our kids attend there, are on free and reduced lunch. 41.3% at Tracy's are on free and reduced lunch. This is as of last year from Maryland data. The Southern High feeder has 33% of our kids are on free and reduced lunch. Just to compare to South River, they have 13%. We're not the same. It's a totally different school than South River. Our transportation, someone mentioned earlier, we are 25% of the county's geographic area. It's a huge area. Transportation is a huge problem for these families. We need to have facilities that are close by to help them. CBS News in August this year, 70% of kids from families making more than $100,000 participate in youth sports. Families that are below the poverty line, 30% participate. Participation of the higher income has actually gone up since 2011. It's gone down for lower-income families. Sports, again and again and again, have proven to develop teamwork, leadership, communication, problem-solving skills that are absolutely invaluable for our populace. We have to give them this opportunity. We have a huge population at Southern. They simply can't play because these travel teams, they're not in our area. We would love to have better facilities to offer.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Nutwell?
Oh, now it's lit up. Okay. Kelly Nutwell, Tracy's Landing, Maryland. Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Kelly Nutwell, and I'm the Associate Field Hockey Commissioner for South County Youth Association. I'm here along with the Commissioner, Sarah Morland, and our coaches to advocate that our organization needs more playable fields, especially turf. In Anarundale County, all rec field hockey games are played on turf starting from age five. Due to limited availability of turf time in South County, this does not hold true for our practices. Currently, SCYA has to split practice time between the grass field in Galesville and the turf at Southern High. Our practice schedule is solely determined by the availability of the turf. Since technique is a huge factor in the game of field hockey, our coaches prefer to hold practice starting after 7:00, just so they are not practicing on a ruddy, grassy, sometimes soggy field. Turf time at the high school is something we request and fight for because it's such an integral part of the team's success. As the commissioners, it's our job to figure out what our teams need in order to be successful field hockey players. We have to question ourselves. Should our sticklers have to bring old socks or their sticks so they can practice on the tennis court or the track around the field? Should our Pee Wees, eight, nine-year-olds have to alternate turf and grass just so they don't have two late practices each week? Then there are middies and juniors who should have full-field practices but can't because the turf has to be shared due to limited turf time we get. Other organizations such as Crofton, South River, and Severna Park have been given an advantage and opportunity to practice on multiple turf fields as well as Bermuda. These advantages are proven to be very beneficial once they hit high school. Just look at their state championship records. As the commissioner for SCYA, we are asking for the same opportunities as these other teams. Space in South County is not an issue. We just need you to recognize it is important for us to have the same resources in order to stay competitive. To sum up, South County needs an additional turf field. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hare had a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, did you say you start practice after 7:00 p.m. so that you can get turf time?
My eight, nine-year-old Pee Wees.
Wow.
And our middies start at 7:00, and our juniors are at 8:00 and 9:00.
How often is that? Every, every practice?
Two nights a week, at least. Every practice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huggins.
Thanks.
Okay. My name is William Huggins. I live in 9A Harwood Drive in Harwood, Maryland. I'm the SCYA Girls Basketball Commissioner. I'm here, you know, speaking for SCYA and Southern, as you guys have gathered. I just want to say I moved down to South County five years ago from Crofton, so I got to benefit all the, from all the improvements down there, and then, and then I left. So, but I absolutely love South County. The people down there are great. The kids are bright and wonderful. And so one of the reasons why I think it really matters is nowadays, there's so much we're competing with, you know, iPhones, with Snapchat and TikTok or whatever, and, you know, and I'm trying to get these kids to come out and play ball. I'd rather see them running and getting exercise and building character and working together as a team than sitting on the couch, you know, looking at their phone or whatever. And, and facilities make a difference. Last year, I had a young girl that I was trying, on my basketball team, that I was trying to convince to come play lacrosse for me, and she kind of turned her nose up a little bit, and then I pointed out that, you know, in lacrosse, you get to play on the big turf field, like the people on TV. And her eyes lit up, and all of a sudden, she was interested. So a nice gym or turf field, those types of things, they do matter to kids, and it will make them want to do it instead of just sitting and looking at their phone. So whatever you can do, I appreciate, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you for letting us speak and giving me a moment to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank all of you again, like everybody else has said, for coming out. My aide, Sarah Gannon, she's actually the, one of the coaches of the varsity field hockey at Chesapeake. So I've been texting with her as you're talking. I'm like, are these folks right? And she's like, yes, they are. They absolutely are. So you're being heard. We hear you, and we will, we will work on this in the next budget. That'll certainly be in front of us. But thank you, guys, for coming out and for your advocacy for your community and the kids.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Moving along, Christos Milotois, Mike Mulheim, Tori Snow, Jessica Ewing, Jeffrey Schrum, and it looks like Chris Knapp. If you would come forward, please. Okay, waiting for the panels to sit down. There we go. Mr. Milotois, you have the floor. Name, address, two minutes.
Christos Milliotis, 546 Higgins Drive, Odenton. On September 28th, at the Anarundale High School Homecoming Dance, my daughter was sexually assaulted. She waited, she immediately told the administration about it. She waited an hour and 15 minutes before they even called us. After we arrived to the school, the police shortly, they arrived shortly after, took a statement that was completely wrong and pretty much sent us on our way. The administration then asked us to leave the dance because we were too much drama for the dance. I refused that and made her stay. The next day, we started asking people what we should do. We contacted the state's attorney and also the Board of Education. It wasn't until after the Board of Education reached out to the high school that we got a response from the principal. After that, it was pretty much no contact for almost a week until we started pushing harder with the Board of Education and the state's attorney. We didn't get any phone call back from any police until Thursday of this past week, almost three weeks later, when a detective reached out to us. The school had pretty much seen the video, which was very unclear, and you can't see anything, and said that there was nothing more that they could do besides talk with students about how they can improve the dance for next year. After talking to the detective, we gave him a description, and we released a statement on social media asking that anybody with information come forward. Within two hours, we received names that we passed on to the detective, and he's hopefully making an arrest tomorrow. Why wasn't the administration more helpful in finding this out? Why did we have to go through it? Why did the administration seem that they just wanted to sweep everything under the bus or under the rug? We need to be heard. Since this has come out, multiple parents, students have contacted my wife and let us know that this happens all the time at Anarundale. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Mulheim?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it. My name is Mike Mulhearn. I've been a South County resident for the past 15 years. I've been fortunate to live all over this beautiful country, and I appreciate your time tonight. So I am very proud to live in South County. It's beautiful there. The people are nice. The kids are good-hearted. What I don't like about South County is our athletic facilities. Again, being all over this beautiful country, I've seen the good and the bad, and we are the worst. My football, I'm the commissioner for football, and my teams play on an all-dirt field. The only reason we play there is because it's the only field other than the high school that has two goalposts, so we're kind of forced to play there because goalpost is part of football. I can tell you that I am the shepherd of the bad kids. I take on the druggies, the bullies, all the kids that are all, that do things bad. I send them the football. Me and my coaches try to instill discipline and put these kids to work, give them something to do other than all these other bad things. So what I am here asking for is for the safety of these kids, and it's all sports. It's not just football. But we literally play on the Southern Middle School field that has no grass. And concussions, you know, everybody's scared about concussions in football. I can tell you that concussions are more likely from bouncing your head off of the dirt than they are from helmet-to-helmet collisions. Everybody in the AAYFA has taken an oath to teach the Seattle Seahawk way of tackling, which is more like a wrestling move. It's a twist and a turn down, and what really is going to hurt us is these facilities. I met with Jerry Walker a few years ago and talked about getting funding, and he said my best opportunity was through philanthropic efforts. And I can tell you that the charity is great. They buy us uniforms, they buy us reconditioned helmets and shoulder pads, but they do not believe it is their place to replace grass fields, add sprinklers, or build concession stands. Concession stands is the only way we can generate enough income to properly fit these kids. And I will tell you that, in closing, I had 15 kids that could not afford to play football, and we had to raise money for that. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Mr. Snow?
Tori Snow, 1307 Beltramp Court, Odenton, Maryland. I'm here tonight as president of Frederick Douglass Foundation of Maryland. I'm here to support the Watson family. And the account that was brought to our attention, recently I attended a forum organized by the county executive talking about the achievement gap, and in that presentation, everything was basically blamed on the fact that the kids were black. I was offended by that message. There was no acknowledgement that the school system itself does have some issues to address. So when this account came to our attention, I reached out to our networks, and many people have corroborated that said there are significant challenges and really a very toxic environment in our schools. And so I believe it is really, really important that we, as a community, begin to take a hard look at what is happening in our schools. It is completely unacceptable that a parent would have to turn to social media to try to get attention. I did see that a statement was issued only after their post went viral with over 2,000 shares. That is not the way government should work here in Anarundale County. That is not the way government should work here in Anarundel County. It should be responsive in addressing some of these issues, especially with many of the cultural issues we're dealing with today. Everyone should be heard. As part of my research, I also discovered that many of the students themselves had raised this very issue in the same exact school, in their own newspaper, saying they had to go on Twitter to try to get people to pay attention to them. This is an epidemic, this is a really, really big issue, and so I am encouraging the county council that has been responsive to other community emergencies to consider a resolution to really confront what's happening at Arundel High School and probably at other schools, but nobody's coming forward to talk about. We really encourage you guys to look into what's going on and to make the situation right so that every student feels safe reporting dangerous conditions that are at their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Ewing?
Good evening. Jessica Ewing, Davidsonville, Maryland. Each and every one of you is tasked with far more than most of us understand, which I can appreciate. From my view, you are legislators, and perhaps even more importantly, you are educators. You see, you were all elected to carry out legislation, but even when we don't actually understand what we are asking for, we are asking for you to educate us on bills. You have more extensive knowledge than the keyboard warriors and an article we read in the paper. I have found too often since this new election, that I am digging for information which is not made readily available. It seems as though some of you opened up your desk upon taking office and found a rubber stamp to put to use left by your predecessor. We voted that out, and so that has to end tonight. With that being said, I did recognize a bipartisan effort on bill amendments this evening. I sent through a PIA the evening of the last council meeting, and much to my surprise, I was met with incompetence from the person who was tasked with carrying out that request. Can you imagine that the person in charge of responding to PIA requests here in the county doesn't even know how long they have to respond as a matter of law? This should concern you. I was later met with a letter from the county attorney informing me that my request is denied in part and granted in part, but it would take 30 days or possibly more to fulfill that request. My request was simple in nature. I asked for all the emails between the Chesapeake Conservancy and Matt Johnson regarding data about forestry laws to include the data in any conversation concerning it. Under the statute, that is a request that should be granted immediately due to its specificity and currency. This is not the transparency I elected, and I can assure you, I can assure you, I won't make that same mistake twice. I do not anticipate that any of you can solve my PIA problem, and I'm dealing with that. What I do anticipate is that you can stand up regardless of party or the content of a bill, and tell the county executive that you will not pass bills that cannot manage to provide requested information to the public before the bill is up for vote, so the constituents can speak intelligently about the bill. What is the point in public comment if you expect us to come up here and speak to you from a place of ignorance? It's a waste of county business time, and it's a waste of mine.
Thank you. Jeff Schrum?
Hello. My name is Jeff Schrum, also from South County. I spent the last 18 years of my life running and organizing rec sports, and I've also been the varsity wrestling coach at Southern High School. So I've seen good fields, bad fields, good gyms, bad gyms, and everything in between. We live in West River and have three kids that play for SCYA. I've been to fields like Bell Branch, Mack, Davisville Park, Lupers Park, and Kinder's Park, to name a few. Every one of the mentioned fields are significantly better than the best fields in South County. From the get-go, this puts us behind other organizations in the county. Having artificial turf and Bermuda grass fields to play on, not only makes you proud of your fields, but makes the actual game a better experience. From all my years in rec sports, the leagues that always filled or sold out first were the nicest fields with good lights and good parking. South County is in desperate need of better facilities just to catch up with the rest of the county. Please consider taking the time to walk off fields or ask your own players if you have children in leagues, and ask them if they'd want to play in South County or their own fields. I would be willing to bet they would choose their own fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
How you doing? I'm Christopher Knapp, Shadyside, Maryland. I'm here on behalf of South County Youth Club. As you can tell, I'm not from this area, but I've been living here for 17 years. I'm originally from Long Island, I'm one of 16 kids, okay? And when I first moved here, South County, I fell in love with it. Both feet jumped in, took over the wrestling program down there, I worked my way up through the community by volunteering my time. On behalf of all the people that are here speaking today, I commend them coming here tonight and presenting what should be done a long time ago. But at any rate, I volunteer my time. I'm also a school teacher in Anarundel County. I teach elementary, I taught elementary for five years, and then I taught middle school for the last 11 years at Southern Middle School. I have four children, my oldest has Down Syndrome, and I have two boys and, two boys, two girls, and three in high school right now. But, South County lacks field space, they, their turf fields are just at the high school, okay? I think safety, ARVAC brought it up, safety is a big issue. I'm a big founder of safety. I know my kids spoke about, spoke about concussions, safety is an issue. Field hockey, safety, you know, playing on turf field, I never experienced field hockey, but I could only imagine field hockey on a turf field and grass field is like night and day. But I'm a wrestling coach, I've been doing it all my life, okay? I can tell you that the spaces, space, gym time down there is very minimal. The schools, I know it's not the Board of Ed, but the last time I spoke to the Board of Ed, it was at a land preservation meeting at Central Middle School, and Rick Anthony, I think, just took over position. Gym time is, is hard to come by, and being a middle school teacher, I, this is what I see. I see different jerseys from around the county, down there, mostly Calvary County, kids that area going down to Calvary County and taking in those sports down there in Dunkirk.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you all to this panel, appreciate you guys coming out.
Before you leave, I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Milliotis. I know your family, and for me, this is personal, so we need to get to the bottom of what happened, so young people feel comfortable reporting and know that their reports will be taken seriously and addressed appropriately. So thank you very much, and please pass on to your family, I admire your courage for coming forward because I'm, I know.
Not me, but my daughter.
Much admiration, much admiration.
Thank you. Thank you all, that is all that I have that signed up for invitation to audience. Is there anyone that did not sign up who wishes to speak? Please come to the table and state your name and address for two minutes. Is there anyone? I see Ms. Johnson, is there anyone else? Again, last call for invitation to audience, then we're going to close it. Okay, while they're sitting down, again, last call, invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, we'll give you a sheet to sign for your name and address, and then we'll go from there. Whoever wants to begin. Okay, Ms. Johnson, you have the floor.
Yeah. Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I wanted to thank all of the people who came tonight. It is so important to communicate with our, our county council. It takes time, effort, but that's the only way you begin to be heard at all, if at all. Of course, tonight, I'm back again asking for help, but this is a slightly different problem. I attended a meeting and a person, part of the topic was the racial problems within our, our school system. So I said my little piece privately, and I said, aren't you going to give me your business card? And he said to me, what can you teach me about race problems? And then I'm thinking, race, institutionalized racism, bigotry, bias, LGBT, you know, religious issues, classism, because money counts, and you've heard this thing about certain parts of the county have beautiful fields and other parts of the county don't, and you kind of have to wonder part of how those decisions are made. But I also wanted to raise the issue of, I think it's important to have people explain to everybody publicly, what can we do to begin to change the terrible problems we are dealing with in our society of hostility, you know, bias, people don't get along nicely, there's bullying, there are bullying issues and all of these other things. So I have an idea. Rather than asking me what my suggestions are, everybody in this room and everybody out there has had, has things that are important to say about what would you teach someone about racism? What would you teach somebody about institutionalized racism, or LGBT bias, or bigotry, or religious problems, or classism? And everybody has an idea about what we can begin to do.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
To pull people together to overcome these terrible problems. So I need a place.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson, we have two other folks. Thank you. Ma'am, and then we'll, either or, doesn't matter. Okay.
Hi, my name is Maran Lee, I'm a resident of West River. My husband and I have been South County residents for 15 years. We have two sons, nine and 11, and we, I wanted to lend my voice to making a plea for more funds for South County Youth Association. It's a huge, it's a great group of people who give tons of time to look out for our kids down there, and I have coached my kids and many others for the last seven years. It is, we're always struggling to find a place where we can, when daylight savings time crushes us for practice time, and it's, it's just a great opportunity for us to hold the community together down there. That's certainly been a big part of our lives, and it's, it's great for my children and for their friends, and, and we need that safe place for kids to come out and play and learn all kinds of life lessons, so I hope you can find more opportunities to support us down there. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Always getting nervous.
Take your time.
I don't even do that at my own city council meeting, I get nervous. My name is Shamir Gladon, I live at 1135 Madison Street, Apartment S2, in Annapolis, Maryland. I just wanted to briefly, I know that everybody's been watching the news, and there's been a lot of talks of money for stuff for athletics, but I work in an department that really is in need of a lot of help, and that is transportation for the school system. As a bus driver, we do not get what we need far as benefits. The company I work for, I have none. So holidays, when we're closed for schools, far as winter break and things of that nature, we don't get paid for that, and that's why a lot of the bus drivers are leaving. So I just want the, the council to know that this is something that maybe we guys should look into, definitely talk to all the bus drivers or potential people that are studying to be bus drivers, to say, why are they not staying in our counties? Because they're not lying, Southern Maryland does have a lot of problems with transportation, we're doubling up on buses, some buses are late, and that's not just this county, this is Prince George's County, this is Calvary County, this is all the counties. So it doesn't matter how much hourly is getting paid, if the benefits aren't right, then the drivers won't stay. So that's something we should definitely look into. We don't have no pension, we don't have no 401K. Well, at my company, I don't even have direct deposit, so you just basically don't have the benefits we need, and we definitely can't afford the health insurance when we only work 180 days out the year. It might be shaved down if, you know, winter hits us hard. So those are some things that should really definitely be looked at and considered, you know, when you have your next council meeting, and hopefully I could be at the next one to share some more information or maybe have some more drivers come, because that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Thank you all. The invitation to audience is now closed. We'll move forward, we have a presentation by Councilwoman Rodvian. You have the floor.
At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Jaslyn Adams to come up. Should I walk down there? Should I head down? Why don't I walk down? This is just, it's, it's so wonderful when we see young people doing wonderful things, and we can tell just by hearing your mom talk that you've got, you know, a sense of doing what's right, and I'm so proud to present this citation to you, and I'm going to read it, because I think the whole audience should hear what this brave young lady did for her community. "The county council of Anarundel County is presenting a citation presented to Jaslyn Adams in recognition of your bravery when faced with finding a gun on the balcony of your home. You did just the right thing in telling your mother and not touching the weapon after learning what to do at CSI camp through the Annapolis Police Department. The Anarundel County Council is very proud of your bravery potentially saving a life. Congratulations, and keep up the good work. I can't wait to see what wonderful things you do in the future."
So she wanted me to say, because she's nervous, just as me.
It's okay.
I'm loud at home, but not nowhere else. She wanted to say that she wanted to thank me and the police department, because if it wasn't for us teaching her what to do, then she would never know what to do in the first place, because that neighborhood is a rough neighborhood, it's Harbor House, and you have to be strong-witted about yourself, especially me being from southeast DC, you have to be quick on your feet, street smart, book smart, all the time. So, she's learned early.
We hear you loud and clear, another round of applause, thank you. Okay, moving along, is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda that's not listed? Okay, seeing no movement. Now, the county council will sit as the board of health, ask the folks to come forward. Dr. Kay, you have the floor.
Hi there. Give me one second. So Chairman Persky and members of the board of health, it's a pleasure to be here. I am Dr. Nalash Kalyanaraman, Health Officer for Anarundel County, and it was just last month that I was appointed as Health Officer, so it's good to see all of you again. I'm an internist and have been in community health for over 13 years, providing primary care and medication-assisted treatment, and I've taken care of some of the most vulnerable people in our communities. So in the month and a half that I've been at the Health Department, as I've had the opportunity to dive into the work that we do, I feel that I'm exactly where I should be. The breadth of programs we offer and the sensitivity with, with which we do it is a testament to the 800 employees of the Health Department. So I'd like to acknowledge the other, other Department of Health staff who are present here today. Ashawn Kane, Deputy Health Officer for Operations. Sandy O'Neil, Director for the Bureau of Behavioral Health Services. Becky Asher, Director for Disease Prevention and Management. Don Curtian, Acting Director for the Bureau of Environmental Health. Karen Siska Creel, Director for the Bureau of School Health and Support. Thomas McCarty, Director for the Bureau of Family Health Services. Ellen Jones, Public Information Officer. And Billy Pendley, Chief Financial Officer, and I want to extend my heartfelt thanks for helping with the transition to this position. I'd also like to recognize Adrian Mickler of the Mental Health Agency. She is a critical partner and one of many we work with in the county to achieve health equity for our residents. So with that, I'm going to go over a slice of what we do and talk about how we continue to push to improve the health of our residents. In your packet, each of you has a presentation, you can follow along with that as you choose. I'm going to share with you the highlights, I'm not going to read it to you. Please feel free to ask questions as we're going along, if there's any point that you want more information on or just want to go into in greater depth. First, I'm going to start with a section, the first section, on the range of our substance use disorder treatment programs. I'm going to highlight a few of them, particularly AA Power. AA Power mobilizes people who have lived experience with substance use disorders. It supports users with risk reduction strategies. It provides information to help reduce the spread of infectious disease and improve overall health. And really importantly, it works with community members to conduct overdose prevention services, distribute naloxone and distribute fentanyl test strips. So in Glenberne, they've distributed 278 Narcan kits this year and 550 fentanyl strips. And today was the first day that we launched in Annapolis, in Eastport and Harbor House. So we're really excited about being able to offer these harm reduction services. This is how we engage people into first, saving their lives, and then moving them along the pathway towards treatment. Another critical part of that pathway is the overdose survivors outreach services. That's a program where we have peers stationed in the hospitals, so Anarundel Medical Center, BWMC, Baltimore-Washington Medical Center, and what they do is they engage with people who have overdosed. People who have overdosed are more likely to overdose again, and this is the opportunity we have to engage them in their moment of crisis, to be able to navigate them not just while they're in the hospital, but to connect them to services in the outpatient setting, to connect them to wraparound services, and to be that contact that follows them outside of the hospital and continues to coordinate that care. Through this program, just in the first three months of this year, we've connected 229 individuals who were seen at BWMC and 193 people at AAMC. Along that continuum is our Wellmobile. One of the key things that we see in the community is that there isn't timely access to medication-assisted treatment, and particularly buprenorphine. When that timely access doesn't exist, we miss opportunities. We all know that there are moments when we know we should take care of ourselves, we find the time, and if we can't find the resources, the moment fades, and then maybe it's another week, or maybe it's another year. The same thing is true there, and so what the Wellmobile does is it provides on-demand access to suboxone, buprenorphine. The same thing is true there. And so what the WellMobile does is it provides on-demand access to suboxone, buprenorphine. That shouldn't be special. You would ask me why I was talking about on-demand access to insulin or blood pressure medications. That would sound ridiculous coming out of my mouth. And yet, that's the situation we're in now. And so this is something special because it is able to do that. And our goal is to be able to have it so that anybody at any time in the county can get the treatment they need when they need it. Right now, we have it functioning two days a week in Glen Burnie out of the WellMobile. And we're looking to get additional funding to get it up to ultimately six days a week. But right now, we are looking to get two more days in Annapolis. We've served 130 individuals so far since it opened in April. And 75% of them have been connected to community treatment. Another key part of this step is training the judiciary on behavioral health issues. And that's a program that we actually take, that we actually think is really critical to disrupt that pattern of incarceration and reentry that promotes repeated drug use. And so we've developed a training curriculum for judges to improve outcomes for individuals with substance use and mental health disorders in the criminal justice system. It's an evidence-based practice. It initiates and sustains the dialogue with the judiciary. It's creating partnerships so that judges can call us, talk to us, ask us about any questions they have. And it enhances their ability to make informed decisions regarding individuals and their substance use and mental health-related needs. We've had five training sessions so far. We've been focusing on district court judges at this time, although we look to expand that to district court judges. And we're really excited to see what comes out of this as we break that cycle of incarceration. And then the last piece in that continuum that I want to share is our Road to Recovery Ordinance Road Correctional Center. So the key fact that you need to know here is that opioid overdose death risk, the risk of dying, is 40 to 120 times higher for people who exit prison or jail without treatment than for those who do. Those two weeks after release from jail are the deadliest in people's lives if they're not getting treated. And so a program like this that provides methadone and vivitrol in the Ordinance Road Correctional Center is critical in keeping people alive. It's critical in connecting people to treatment and getting them on that path to reentry. In addition to those two medications, we're also going to be in 2020 starting an injectable buprenorphine program in partnership with Corrections and the National Institutes of Drug Abuse. I think what you need to know is that it's been recognized as a national promising practice in July 2019 by the National Association of County and City Health Officers. This is a national model, what we are doing here. And we look to continue to expand this program. I want to transition to us to a number of programs along the pathway of, from pregnancy to old age. So the first is our WIC program. It remains a critical program in taking care of pregnant women and young infants and providing nutritional counseling and dietary supplements. We see about 6,200 participants each month. And it continues to be a, it continues to be a program that is expanding and that we're looking to expand geographically as well, looking to parts of the county as they've all left. But in the South County, they might, they might want to come back for that too, advocate. Anyway. And that dovetails with our Healthy Start Home Visiting Program. That's a more intensive program, particularly targeted towards women with substance use disorders, women experiencing poverty, and minority women for whom health outcomes are, health outcomes and birth outcomes are not as, not as good. One of the key parts of this that we revamped is that we've included a peer program in this to provide parenting education to these high-risk women. So in the three months since we revamped that, since July, we've provided services to 46 women, 11 with substance use disorder, and 110 infants, 28 of whom have been exposed to substances in utero. And we've provided over 1,300 services. And we're looking to see what the outcomes are of this program. And so we'll be able to report back that, that back to you at a later date. Along that continuum is dental services. That continues to be an area that is challenging for many children. Children on Medicaid do have access to that. Depending on their parents' plan, they have that as well. But dental access for poorer adults in Maryland is still difficult to come by. So one of the things we focus on is how do we provide those services to children to at least get them set up as they go along in life? So we provided over 6,000 clinical visits for children, including exams, cleanings, x-rays, fluoride treatments, dental sealants. But we've also done over 1,100, almost 1,200 clinical visits for adults. Really focusing on pregnant women, once again, to try to address those disparities in birth outcomes. Also, people with HIV. And that's a new program that we've instituted. A lot of our HIV-positive folks have had to travel to Baltimore City to get their services. We're able to now provide that in the county. And also some urgent referrals for the emergency room. We're all familiar with the story of DiAmante Driver from a little over 10 years ago. And so our program is trying to address that at the adult level. How do people who are being seen in the emergency room for a dental emergency get treated without incurring those emergency room costs and that, frankly, that level of service? At that same time, we're also connecting some of those folks to dental providers in the community. And I think this is an area we need to keep an eye on, which is how are we, how are we providing for oral health access? Along that line, we're launching, we have launched a dental sealant program. And dental sealants are a form of cavity prevention in youngsters, six to nine-year-olds. We launched that at Mills Parole Elementary School this month. And we'll be doing that in Tyler Heights in the spring. Included here some data about our vision screening services. The thing that I wanted to focus on here is while this is a state mandated service, we as a county are, if not the best, amongst the best in the state in conducting these vision screening services and doing the follow-through. We screened a little over 23,000 children in the past year. And 3,667 of them needed further assessment. And we had 70% follow-up with that group, which is the target set for the state and almost no other county is matching that. So I just wanted to note that to you and give a little, give a little love to our school health services. We're doing a really great job at that. Also wanted to highlight our STAR program, our Screening Teens to Access Recovery Program. That's a telehealth program that's located in our schools that makes it available for students who want to engage substance use disorder services on their own. They're able to, they're able to engage with the school nurse to get telehealth services to therapists, Department of Health therapists. To date, that was launched in March, right towards the end of the school year. To date, only six students have screened through that, have been screened through that program. And we're looking to see how that program rolls out while there's, as there's more emphasis on this as we're going along, particularly with the mental health task force that we were talking about. When we're talking about school health, just wanted to note that we provide over 710,000 services to the 85,000 students in our school system. And there's a wide range. I can give you pages and pages of data on this. Suffice to say that our school nurses cover a lot of territory, from asthma to diabetes, bullying to substance use prevention and medication management. When we talk about caring for our kids in their communities, they're a key part of that infrastructure. Tobacco 21, if you're not familiar with, was, went into effect in October. And that's the state law that bans anybody under the age of 21 from buying any tobacco product. And that includes the e-cigarettes, vaping devices, electronic nicotine devices. We'll be doing enforcement on that. We have always done enforcement on that in partnership with the police. But we're looking to see what the data is around the 21-year-old, around, sorry, the Tobacco 21 law. So we'll be following up with you on that at the next Board of Health. One of the newer programs that we've launched is our Pre-Exposure Prophylaxis Program, which is called PREP. PREP is a HIV prevention, HIV prevention program that provides medication to people at high risk of getting HIV. And that medication, Truvata, if taken regularly, will prevent the transmission of HIV. It's a remarkably effective treatment. And so what we're doing is we're making sure that the information is out there for folks who, to know about this, to talk to their providers about this. And we've linked over 150 individuals to the education. And so far, nine people have begun PREP care with Truvata that we are aware of. As with any of these public health campaigns, we're not going to be aware of all of the ones who have been linked to care. But this is a critical step in breaking that cycle of transmission in the county. One key, one key, one key thing we need to think about, and that was mentioned a little bit earlier, is about people who don't have access to, access to healthcare, people who are uninsured. Through our REACH program, we try to get at as much of that as we can. We work with uninsured folks to connect them to specialists and medical providers, primary care and specialty, at low cost. It's one of those programs that we do because we have to, because there's a gap in the care that we need to deliver. We've provided coordination to 1,495 primary care visits, 1,590 specialist visits. But it's something for us to think about is how we are going to, as a county, as a state, close that gap. These are the sort of inefficiencies that pile up and that make it actually harder to provide for public health. And along those lines of gaps, I want to talk about one of the gaps that we're closing in Brooklyn Park. And that's our Brooklyn Park Healthy Food Pantry. Many of you have seen, if not all of you have seen, maps of the food deserts that exist in Anarundel County, areas where people are not able to access fresh fruits, vegetables, meats, dairy. And so are forced to choose less nutritious foods. When we look at our, when we look at cancer rates, cardiovascular disease rates, those are affected by those choices that accumulate over the span of years and decades. And so this is, this is, this is a program in partnership with a number of different agencies and organizations. WIC, Maryland Children's Health Program, Maryland Food Bank, Community of Hope, Restoration Community Development Corporation, and Anarundel County Wreckin Parks and Public Schools to provide meats, dairy, fresh fruits, vegetables, dry goods, canned goods to 40 to 60 families each week, which reaches about 200 people. And it's an attempt to get a foothold in to see what the effect is of a program like this and also what other solutions can come out of this. What we do know is that the families that need this service need other services as well. This isn't the only thing they need. And so we've been partnering to provide other services while people are at the food, at the food pantry. And I think that it behooves us to think about what are ways that we can sustainably bring grocery stores to these communities? What are the different types of stores that are needed? And what are different ways in meeting that need? Lastly, I want to review a few, few large-scale public health interventions that we have before I talk about what comes next. The rodent control program is always of interest to the, to the council. We've had this program in place since 2017, and it runs typically through the late spring and summer months into the early fall. This was, this was started in 2017 in response to a high number of rodent issues in certain neighborhoods, particularly in Brooklyn Park. And secure garbage cans were distributed along with intensive, intensive educational efforts. We provide free pesticide services when conditions are corrected that lead to rodent infestation. And unfortunately, we do have to do code enforcement when conditions are not corrected. We've been in Brooklyn Park for three years now, since 2017. And this year, we added the Chesterfield and Glen Burn, communities in Chesterfield and Glen Burnie, based on the volume of rodent calls that we see there. And so this program continues. And when we track the data in Brooklyn Park, we see that we've seen significant decreases in the evidence of rodents in the, in, over the course of three years. We have seen a little bit of an uptick this year, and we're not quite sure what that is, so we're tracking that. Let you know a little bit about the Bay Restoration Fund. That's a, that's a, seeks to improve water quality in the bay by reducing nutrient runoff, especially nitrogen. This is a particular issue along the, along the coast. In this fiscal year, the Department of Health has $2.67 million. And to date, $1.23 million has been allotted for 14 public sewer extensions and 95 best available technology installations to reduce nitrogen runoff. And lastly, I wanted to point out the Stop the Bleed Training, which is, which is being done by our Office of Emergency Preparedness and Response. And they've been training throughout the county at local and federal government agencies, volunteer fire departments, community groups, malls, and BWI airport staff. I bring this up because this is one of those critical, critical trainings that we do in terms of public health, which is preparing. It's something that we don't pay a lot of attention to because it's hard. There are a lot of immediate crises. But it's this kind of training, this Narcan training, CPR training, that helps save lives when, when, when seconds matter. So I've given you an overview of a number of our programs, talking about our behavioral health programs focusing on substance use, looking at a range of programs from pregnancy all the way to families and older age, and also some broader public health interventions. In the next few, in the next few moments, I want to talk about where the, where the opportunities are for us to improve health in our communities. And that's, that's, and what we're talking about really is health equity. Health equity means that everybody has a fair and just opportunity to be healthy. It means that we need to dig deeper to understand what it is that keeps some people or some groups from achieving their health potential. It means addressing poverty, racism, and the social determinants of health. And it matters because differences that we see between groups, when they persist, suggest that something deeper is occurring. I want to give you some examples of the data that we have in the Health Department, of some of those disparities, and then talk about what it is that we're going to be doing in the coming months and years to address that. So the next slide shows some racial health disparities that we see around what we call age-adjusted mortality rate. Essentially, how many people die? And what we see is that people who are, people who are black are dying at a higher frequency from any reason, from heart disease, from cancer, from stroke. And those differences have persisted over time. On the next slide, you'll see that black mothers are giving birth to lower weight babies. Why does that matter? Babies who have low birth weight have higher risk of developmental delays and neurological disorders. And that's a difference that's persisted over time. On the next slide, you'll see some disparities based on income, where people have access to, where people have access to food. And this is based on people who need access to SNAP and people with low access to food. These health disparities affect the health of all of our residents, but not in the same way. Each disparity has its effect on certain groups of people. And what's striking is that when you start overlaying these maps, it's the same people over and over again that keep showing up. It's health disparities that we're talking about. And those disparities occur by income, by race and ethnicity, and by geography. And it's our task, not just as a Health Department, but as a county, to address those drivers, including poverty and racism, and to implement targeted interventions to look at why they're happening, and then to address those root causes, because those causes are different between different groups in different areas. To do that, we have to engage our communities. We have to listen to those affected communities and include them in building solutions. I mentioned to you earlier, or not earlier, last time, that I wanted to restart the Healthy Anarundel Coalition. That does need to restart, and it needs to do it with community representation. And I'll be asking each of you in the coming month to identify community groups who are going to be able to participate in that, not just service agencies, but community groups. And lastly, we need to look at the social determinants of health, the conditions in which we live, work, and play, and how we integrate these factors into the work that we do. It's why I highlighted the food pantry. That's not typically the domain of a Health Department. And yet, we know that that, just as much as anything else we do, is going to improve health outcomes in the folks that we serve. And yet, there's so much more to do. Which is why I close with a quote from St. Augustine, which is "Charity is no substitute for justice withheld." for justice withheld." It's up to us to determine what is just as part of the community and to deliver that to our residents. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Looks like we do have a few lights. Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Dr. Kellie Anna Raman for coming tonight. Of course, you had to, because now it's your job, but I'm sure you probably would do this if we didn't pay you. So I have two questions from your presentation. On the Road to Recovery at Ordinance Road, do you think that by, I don't know, either in May or next October, would you be able to, to correlate, hopefully in, in some way that doesn't involve violating HIPAA, whether we can track the folks who are, who leave ORCC or any facility who are there based on a substance, you know, charge of some kind? Whether we can track that those folks did not then have an overdose? As in, can we look at the overdose data over the next year and at least be able to say amongst people who do overdose, whether or not they were recently in one of our correctional facilities?
I'll have to look, because that's, that's pulling together different threads of data. The overdose data tends to come from hospitals and police, and we'd have to see if we can match that up to the data of who we're seeing in the, in ORCC. So I don't know the answer to that, just because I don't know if I can match those data sets, but if we can, we will.
Okay. And my second question is on the REACH program. Can you give us an idea of how you anticipate this program, how we're going to see in May, whether you'll have a budget request for expanding the program, or if there's something else that you think we should be doing to diminish the, the gap that the REACH program covers?
I think one of the things that we're going to be looking at is with the REACH program, you know, I'll, I'll tell you candidly, I think that we would like to see everybody covered, but I think that there are groups within that that are more, more or less critical, but definitely more, one of the groups that I keep hearing about is pregnant women without insurance, and what are we doing about that? And so I think that there are some, some particular groups that we need to look at as priorities, and so we will be, we will be identifying those groups that we think we would want to consider funding, funding additional services for.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have, I've been working on an issue in Glenberne that's not necessarily unique to Glenberne, but as we talk about, and I'm getting out in the community, we're talking about revitalization, I've pulled together a meeting with, regarding our homeless situation, and you were actually on my list to call this week, so I'm just going to take the liberty of talking to you here.
Hey, I'm right here.
You know, our homeless outreach program is part of social services, and I'm curious if there is any intersections with the Department of Health. It's a very complex issue. I'm, I'm very keen, I, I fully understand that it's a complex issue, but as we, as we work hard in one area of, with the police and with the homeless outreach and social services, we're just seeing our homeless community just move a couple blocks over, you know, or down the road, and it doesn't seem like we're, while we are getting some folks, I think we've got 46 homeless in housing this year so far, which is amazing. I'm curious if you have any insight in what else we can be doing, and we don't, you don't have to answer all of that right now, but I feel like it's going to come up at my forum on Wednesday, and I would love, like, a really great answer. Can you help me out with that?
Sure. So you know that this is an issue near and dear to me, and one of, so I'm meeting with a few folks in the coming weeks, so with Pam Brown from Partnership and with Tarnita White from DSS, to see how we can partner on this. I think housing is a, housing is a healthcare issue. We see the, the health outcomes for people who are homeless are tragic, frankly, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a clear example of how those social determinants impact health. We know that for folks who are chronically homeless, their life expectancy is cut short by 25 years. That's amazing.
Well, if you're not doing anything Wednesday night and you want to come to be able to answer my constituents' question?
Mm-hmm. Duly noted.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have quite a few, so what I'm going to do in the effort of being courteous is I'll ask one, and then I'll cede to Councilwoman Fiedler, and then maybe I can get a chance again. I did want to ask you, Dr. K, about the 5G issue. So you know that's on the agenda for us on other legislation, but I just want to talk to you generally about 5G, the radiation, effects on humans, and sort of what you've seen, because you are the top health professional in the county, and obviously you work for the state too, but can you sort of talk to us about that? Because that's obviously one of the things that we're looking at when we consider this legislation, is not only what does the law require under the FCC and certain things, but what's our role as legislators to protect people in the community?
Sure. So the 5G issue, when we're talking about 5G, we're talking about a very specific type of radiation, radiofrequency radiation. Broadly, radiation is categorized in two buckets, ionizing and non-ionizing, and the difference being that ionizing is damaging to DNA in the bodies, non-ionizing is not, very generally. And with, with 5G, it's, it's radiofrequency waves, and it's a very specific energy level. There have been, there have been studies done, I don't want to say specifically on 5G, on that wavelength, there is a few, there's one or two in my literature search, but over time, on radiofrequency broadly. There are some suggestive studies that there might be health effects, but there's nothing convincing. I think this is one of those areas where there isn't, there isn't any clear evidence of any health harms that come from it, but I think we all know that, that the absence of evidence isn't the evidence of absence, right? But from a scientific perspective, we can't offer that we know that it causes damage or harm. There are some small-scale studies that suggest that there might be some mood issues in closer proximity versus farther distance from cell towers, but they're not reproducible, and they all have methodology challenges. I think the big issue we have is that it's really difficult to devise a study at this point, given the pervasiveness of wireless technology and radio waves. So the best I can tell you is that there really isn't any evidence to suggest that there's harm, but that doesn't mean that there's any evidence to suggest that it's safe either.
Okay. And just a quick follow-up on that, and then I'm, I'll cede over. So with, I, I like your statement where you said the, the lack of evidence is not evidence of absence, sort of that, two sides to that same thing. I guess my question to you would be, one of the things that we've heard from the legal standpoint is that we, as a council, have no ability to legislate on environmental issues, that they basically are subsumed, I shouldn't say environmental, I should say health issues, because they're subsumed within larger environmental concerns, which we don't have the ability to deal with. And I guess my question to you is, if we don't know that it's safe, but we don't know that it's not safe, what path forward might there be for us to, to sort of protect against that? I mean, I know that's sort of a broad question for you, and, and if you don't have an answer right now, I get that, but I'm just trying to look at it and balance the two sides of it, to see, yes, legally, we have an obligation to do certain things under the FCC. At the same time, we have an obligation to our citizens who have said to us, hey, protect us, you know, in all these different ways, they've asked us to do that. So I would just pose that to you, and if you have an answer tonight, that's great. If not, if you could work on that and get something to us, I'd appreciate it, because I expect we're going to be voting on this, and, and I don't know whether we'll vote on it tonight or not, but I think we need that information to be able to vote on it.
Okay. I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. I'm, I'm good for now, Mr. Chair, but I'll come back.
Okay. Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we sat as the Board of Health the last time, I had some questions about adolescents and suicide numbers. Since that time, there has been youth suicide in my district. I attended the candlelight vigil for that young man and was quite alarmed by the amount of peers who got up and spoke and said that they understood those feelings of wanting to take their own life. So I went home and did a lot of Google researching, and I found something called the Hope Squad that has been ruled out in school systems in Ohio and Texas, those were just the top two I could find. And essentially, it trains students within high schools to be peer mentors or peer supports for those students who are struggling or have been identified as potentially suicidal. Is that something that you could pursue or be interested in? I also went to a suicide prevention event in the county and learned of a program called Assist, which trains, trains individuals who want to be able to identify friends or family who may be suicidal and help preventing them as well. So I, I see the opportunity out there, I just don't know how to kind of roll it out within the county or the school system, and wanted to know if the department has thought of anything similar to those options.
Sure. I will, I will look into that. There, there, our school services are constantly looking at ways to address the needs that are in our school, and one of their, one of their focuses is on mental health. They just had a training last week amongst all the school nurses, 100 of them, to address issues of mental health in, in the school system. I'll look into this, I'll look into these programs that you mentioned. We are also a part of the Mental Health Task Force that the ACPS is, is, is leading. And so as part of that, I think that this is one of those issues that where we need to be able to partner with the school to figure out what are the interventions, and particularly, what can we do with the information that we find, right? I think that's the tricky part in this one. That doesn't mean that we can't solve it, it's just the tricky part. And so I'll, I'll get back to you on that in term, I'll, I'll take a look at that, but I know that this is a focus of ours, and we hope that as part of the Mental Health Task Force program, we can implement a program that is satisfactory to the community.
Okay. And I'd be happy to be part of that conversation.
Wonderful.
Councilwoman Rodden?
I'll just start by saying thank you to Councilwoman Fiedler for raising the youth mental health issue. I think it, you know, it's something that I have a very large concern about, but I also have concern about mental health for people of all ages in our county, because I feel like that's, you know, contributes to things like substance abuse when people are, you know, sort of self-medicating. Obviously, there's a lot of different factors involved, but I really just want to say thanks for raising that. I just have one really brief question that arose from your mention of the REACH program, and I'm curious if you have an estimate of the number, and this might have been actually in the presentation during our public, public testimony part of the meeting, but do we have an estimate of the number of people in the county that are uninsured, or a percentage?
I don't, I, you know what, I'm not going to misquote it. I have it. I've forgotten the number, I have it on my desk. I will get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a number that's, sorry, just, it's a number that comes from the Maryland Health Exchange, paid for research to look at it by county, and so I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three questions, sort of thoughts, completely disjointed, and I recognize that you've only been on the job about a month now, so if, if I'm, please feel free to tell me that, you know, I'm sort of out of left field. But following up to Councilwoman Fiedler's suggestion or question, you mentioned this STAR program, the Screening Teens to Access Recovery. I'm a little surprised that only six students have taken part in that, and I, I don't know if maybe you think that that's because there's a lack of sort of outreach, or it's just not well-known, or do you have any thoughts on that?
I think a lot, a lot of programs take time to take hold. We see that with almost all of our programs. It takes a while for people to believe that it's going to stay, that it's going to be worth their time, and then once people, once your peers use it, frankly, they're more likely to. So this is not surprising to me, and I would suggest that we continue to just watch what's happening.
I'm wondering if a similar framework, since that framework seems to already be in place, I'm wondering if a similar framework might be able to be transitioned over for a mental health, you know, conversation with a licensed therapist, the same way you're using it for substance use issues? If, if you literally just took the exact same program that you have and expanded it, we might, we might be able to capture some of the students who are seeing that they've had those thoughts and need, need to talk to somebody. The second piece, so on your slide that showed sort of the overlay of households with low access to food and average households on SNAP, a good portion of District 7 is, is covered by both of those. And I know that you've got some great programs in here, the Healthy Food Pantry in Brooklyn Park and things like that, and I'm wondering if, when you come to us next time, you might put forth some ideas to expand some of those programs in the area in South County where we do have such a high average or above average number of households with low access to food and families on SNAP?
So we're looking at actually a partnership to provide services at the Lula Scott Center.
Okay.
So I'm not sure when, but I'm taking a field trip down there. I can let you know when that is.
Oh, that'd be great. I'd love to, I'd love to participate.
If you were able to join us, that'd be wonderful, because we're looking at providing those food pantry services, and this is in concert with aging and disabilities. They like to provide services there, particularly a meal service program.
Right.
And we're looking at whether we can do a pantry, WIC services, kind of a range of the services that we provide, so I'll let you know.
My last, my last piece, and this is sort of a bravo, it, it looks to me, if I'm reading this correctly, the number of overdoses per month dropped significantly from August to September, I mean, 30% in, in that month, and similarly, the number of Safe Station assessments dropped 25% or so, if my math is correct. Is that an anomaly? I mean, both of those are sort of the lowest numbers they've been in quite some time. Is that, do you have anything to attribute that to, or is it just kind of a one-off?
Well, we've seen, you know, even at the beginning of this year, we've seen reductions in the number of overdoses, and we, which is why we continue to pull, push full force, right? They're because of the interventions that we put into place. It's hard to say what one-month data looks like, whether that's a blip.
Sure.
Unless we see it for a few months, it's probably a reporting problem, if anything else.
Okay, fair. Well, I will hope that in six months, when you're back here, we will see continued.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Round two, Councilman Volkey?
I don't know, Councilwoman Rodden looked like she was ready to go, so.
Only because this is, it just really trails on what Councilwoman here was.
Because the Councilman yields.
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just wanted to mention, and I don't know if this is something the Health Department has looked into, you know, in your quest to bring good nutrition to all parts of the county, but I know that there are several communities in Annapolis that have something called a goodie bus, and it's totally private. It's a private operation that comes around basically just to bring, like, you know, little things that people, little life necessities, like, I don't know, laundry detergent, or snacks, or things like that, but I'm wondering if there might be some sort of opportunity to have a sort of healthy food goodie bus, you know, for communities, you know, sort of to bring, you know, bring nutrition to communities. And if something like that exists, I apologize to whoever's idea I just touted and say thank you for already doing what I think would be great. And I know, I think of the city, the city of Baltimore that has, what are they called? The, they're the carts that go around.
The e-rappers.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the things that I'd ask you about in September, when we had you here for the confirmation, was one of the things from the County Executive's Transition Report, specifically his Safe Communities subsection number three, talking about improving and expanding educational resources for mental health and substance use disorders. And we had talked about Not My Child, and we had talked about some other things. In the intervening time, I actually got a chance, and I don't know if you made it up there, but to Marley Station Mall, I know I went, I know Councilwoman Pickard went, I know Councilwoman Fiedler went, to the, to the Northeast High School Haunted House of Addictions that they had up there, and that was put on, it was a lot of groups that were involved. It was the addiction community, it was the police, through the PACT officers, the police and community together, the fire department, I think Ms. Corbin's team was involved with that too. So it was just tremendous. I mean, I, I can't say, I'm sorry.
Northeast High School.
Yeah, Northeast High School. I walked out of there moved, I know Councilwoman Fiedler was moved, I know Councilwoman Pickard was too. So I just, I guess when I look at that, my biggest disappointment with it was that they told me it lasted two days, and that you had not even all the high schools, frankly, Chesapeake High School in my district, and Broadneck High School in Councilwoman Fiedler's district, I don't think they sent any students. And on top of it, it was open to the public for a whopping four hours. Now, when we talk about things that might actually make an impact to keep this number going in the right direction, which is down, I think we've got to find a way to do that again, and we've got to find a way to do that a little more long-term, because it, it was tremendous. So I don't know if that's on your radar or not, but if it's not, then I would ask that it become on your, on your radar, something big, because it was just, I don't, there wasn't a dry, I mean, even the kids were crying when they walked out. It was that, it was that moving and that impactful, and I think it's something that everyone in this county could benefit from. So if we can find a way to keep that going, you know, I know there was a partnership with the mall, the mall gave the space for, I think it was for free, or it was a reduced price, they got another vendor who assisted with the utilities. They got another vendor who assisted with the utility bills, and then they had the students there, and then they had the emergency responders there, too. So I don't know if that's something that you can find a way to do either semi-permanently or on a permanent basis, but I would strongly recommend that. It particularly is kind of a continuation of the Not My Child program, which looks like it's gone by the wayside, but this seems great.
Okay. We'll look into that. I mean, we, you know, we continue to, there, we, both the Health Department but other agencies as well, continue to do outreach, whether that's fairs, outreach to libraries, to community centers. These are ongoing efforts. And I think one of the things we can, I understand what you're saying about this, too.
I just think it was so well-done. I mean, I recognize and I appreciate all those other efforts, but this one was just, it hit you right in the face. You couldn't walk out of there without being impacted by it, so.
Got it.
Thank you. All right. Also wanted to follow up with you. Have you had a chance to look at the Race Hate Bias Report that came out recently from the state that identified some of the issues here in the county? Have you seen that yet?
I've not seen that report yet.
Okay. Well, one of the things I wanted to ask you about is, I'm not quite sure if this is in your purview or not, but obviously my district, 21122, had a high prevalence of these issues. Councilwoman Pickard's area as well in Glen Burnie, not to call her out, but that was also another one of the high-issue areas. Again, it kind of gets into this public health, community health piece of it, and I don't know what role the Health Department can play there, but we've got some issues that we need to be working on. And I will say, it's even more than just, it's obviously the general populace, but I dug deeper on the numbers. I reached out to the Police Department and found out that of the instances in my area, there were about 23 that were reported. 18 of them were in the schools. So that's 78% of them are happening in the schools, and these are kids. So we've got to find something to do with that. And I know that's not totally you, but with your role kind of getting in with the school health program and being involved with that, if there's anything you can do with that, I think it would be great. Another thing that I wanted to ask you about was, I had a chance to spend some time with one of our police officers the other night, and we did, I guess, a ride-along, is what they call it. We wound up, we spent two hours in the emergency room at BWMC waiting for an emergency petition to be taken over by the hospital. Number one, I've already talked to the chief about this, but it's unacceptable for our officers to be sitting in there for two hours. I mean, that's outrageous. Like, he could be out doing 100 other things, and he's there sitting sort of waiting, waiting, waiting for somebody to be available. So I think we've got to find a way to deal with that. But number two, I was talking to a few of them, and they said, and this is just kind of spitball numbers, but 70% of their job is sort of social work and dealing with people and kind of just dealing with people problems. What kind of mental health education or continuing education are we offering to our police officers? I know we're giving it to school health professionals, but what about police officers?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to turn to my colleagues back there, probably give you a better answer than I could.
You guys can get back to me, too. I mean, you can come on up if you, all right, perfect.
So we actually, in the last, Jen Corbin with Crisis Response for Anarundel County Director. Actually, over the last six years or so, we've increased that education throughout their academy class. They get almost up to 40 hours of mental health training.
Okay, good.
Along with each officer in Anarundel County, all the way up through lieutenant is mental health first aid-trained. All our SROs are trained in both mental health first aid and adult and youth version, as well as we have the crisis intervention training, which is the 40 hours, which we're almost at, I believe, almost 20% trained in the county.
20% of our officers?
Almost. We're almost there. We have one more class coming up that I think will get us there.
Okay.
But the key is, we've changed how it's done in the academy. And so now it's, our officers are developing in the county, they're getting a lot of that training early on, and also then have the opportunity to go into our CIT school once they've been in the field for a year. So it's definitely improved over the last five years. And not only that, but the chief has done a great job in in-service of bringing us back in to do many classes as they have their in-services throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I still get there? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Cage, just real quick, because constituents in my area consider it a health issue, the hotel enforcement. Again, I know we have a work group coming up, we're solving a bill, but I just want you to go on the record, if you're aware of the issue, and I've asked for two things, what policies that we need to change to improve the situation? And number two, in the budget process, are there not enough inspectors? So I need, I kind of, I know you don't have all that answer tonight, but if you just want to make a statement for the record, because there are people listening that, you know, want to hear that response about the hotel situation. For those that don't know, it's the public nuisance that we have in certain areas that hotels are basically using our police force for their private security, making money. And we talk about human trafficking. There was articles in the New York Times about hotels in my district. We talk about high-level crime. I mean, there are areas that are just absolutely not the model business that we want to have. So if you just want to make a quick statement on that, then I have a couple other things. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, we have talked about this issue. I have looked into what our inspections have been, and we continue to do inspections on five properties. I just got an update today about those properties. What we're seeing is that there are a number of violations typically around sanitary conditions, fire alarms, cockroaches. Some of them are being abated, some are not. We've actually had to refer one on to the, one on for legal intervention. You know, we corresponded, the broader issue is, how do we both stop that behavior now but also for the future as well? What are the needs there? The criminal elements that are there, we need to address, but also in terms of human trafficking, poverty, how are we addressing that comprehensively? So I'm looking forward to the work on the task force to try to figure out what the root causes are there.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. And then there's just a couple other issues, and I could ask if maybe you could follow up, because I want it for the sensitivity of time. So many communities in our district are part of the Maryland Agricultural Mosquito Program, but often here they're not on the list. And I don't know if that's something that Anarundel can supplement, but I hear so many complaints when it rains that the communities aren't covered and they're not on the list. And a lot of them aren't even informed that there is a list and there's a process you go through. Again, I don't know if my colleagues have ever heard that, but I get calls all the time that, why are they not on the list? So if we can educate some folks, maybe get a message about how you get there and supplement that.
Sure.
Prior council, school nurses, I haven't been given an update like in retention, what's happening with them. I know there's always a concern over their benefits. I've always advocated that we need to look at bringing them back in the retirement system. I know other school districts, and I work for one, can't retain anybody because they keep leaving to go to the hospitals because they make so much money. And so I don't know, I'd like an update on their retention and what's occurring in the schools. I've only gotten a few complaints because I'm no longer on the school board, but when I was there, for those that don't know, but if a child needs insulin shots or they need medical care, there's typically a school nurse there. Well, guess what? If it's somebody different every day, they don't know the child, and it becomes a big problem. And that was the problem that we had with prior administration trying to privatize because a different person would show up every day. That's a whole nother subject, but if you can follow up with me and I can share with my colleagues. Farmers markets, I often see that they're in, not all the time, but a lot of them are in well-to-do neighborhoods. I don't know if there's been a survey of reaching out to the council members of the communities to find those other pockets. I know you have Brooklyn Park, other things, but I know like in the Laurel Russa community, they've been advocating for one. There's a church that wanted to be a partner. I don't have the time because I don't run that department, but I don't know who's the liaison, how did they get that started? Has there been a review? Because when we talk about poverty, I would think that you look at the school farms data, the stuff that you reported here today, and then correlate those markets. It's kind of where some of the council members were saying, will you run a goodie truck or whatever? You know what I'm saying? So you target where the issues are. Again, I don't know that data, but that's something that could be followed up on, and expansion of farmers markets, because what I heard, people want to buy local produce, and certainly it's been successful. And last but not least, Councilman Volkey, I'm glad you brought this up about the hate and racial bias report. I mean, we certainly know that it's there, but the question comes down to, and this is something that your department needs to decide, is that the hate and racial behaviors that we see, is that a public health crisis? In my opinion, I think it is. So how do you address that? You know, we mentioned mental health here, but also is there a symposium or something that brings the schools involved? I don't have that answer, but certainly something needs to be done, because there's too much occurring in certain pockets and areas. And in particular, I think, you know, it's dependent upon all of us to show that it's not the right thing to do, you know, that we should treat everyone with respect regardless of who you are. But especially what was brought up about the schools, if those incidents are occurring there, that's alarming. You know what I mean? And again, I'm not trying to say it's okay as adults or whatever else, but if it's going on at schools, that's a little concerning. So I guess maybe taking a different approach to look at what the Health Department can do or what could be the conversation, you know, around that to address that. And again, I don't, you don't have all those answers, but those are the things that I wanted to mention.
So I will talk about the race issue briefly, because I did mention it in here, because, you know, it's part of, when we're talking about health equity, racism is a key driver of that. And both the overt versions that we're talking about here, but also more subtle and more systemic, more systemic versions of that. It's not coincidental that maps of poverty and maps of race have high degrees of overlap. Those are legacies of decades of policy choices that have been made. They're not the same thing. There's poverty amongst all different races and ethnicities, but as I mentioned earlier, there are different solutions that need to be targeted to different groups. So I absolutely think that racial justice is a part of the work of the Health Department. It's not the only work for the Health Department, right, that needs to be amongst all of us, but it's absolutely at the core of the work that we do. And that's why it's going to be, that's why it's going to be a key part of what we're talking about as we're going forward in terms of, A, the health disparities, how we're going to address them, B, our Healthy Anarundel Coalition. And when I say how we're going to address them, this is where it gets to, I think, what you're talking about here. It's not about having another program to address low birth weight black babies, right? That's more, that's more wraparound services. We have those programs. There's something else that's going on. And when we see the toxic effects of racism and stress, they show up in these metrics that we have. When we look at the adverse childhood experiences, this is a part of that. So to answer your question, yes, this is a part of the work of the Health Department, and you will see that going forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you this evening.
Thank you.
The county council is now completed, is sitting as the Board of Health. We are moving along with our agenda. May I have a motion of the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a vote resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of October 7, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 7, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, the minutes of October 7, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 8119, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart.
Okay. And Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of the resolution to be introduced this evening?
Resolution number 4419, Resolution Approving Move Anarundel, Anarundel County's Transportation Functional Master Plan.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6819.
Bill number 6819, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Force Conservation.
Okay. Again, this was an administration bill. The public hearing is closed. This will be a vote-only. Just want to give the administration one last comment and open up for discussions, then it looks like we have.
Lots of amendments.
Thank you.
A number of amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trumbauer with the County Execs Office. Let me introduce our all-star panel here. To my left, we have Matt Johnston, the Environmental Policy Director. We have our Planning Officer, Stephen Kai-Ziegler. We have Eric Michelson from DPW. We have your favorite zoning expert, Lori Rhodes from OPZ, and our county attorney, Greg Swain. Mr. Chair, we had considerable conversation about this bill at the last meeting, and we all heard three and a half hours of public testimony, so we have no further comment at this time, but we understand there's a couple of amendments to be considered, and we will be happy to weigh in on this.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Bill 6819?
I read the title. We are now officially in vote.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Then we'll start off, Councilman Volkey. Initial discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I want to make sure I was in the right spot. I'm not sure who to address this to, so I'll just address it generally, and you all can pick who wants to answer. Have you had a chance to look at the Maryland Department of Natural Resources State Forest Conservation Program Annual Reports from 2010 to 2017?
So we provided the auditor and also the council the reports that we provide to Maryland DNR, and then I believe that a stakeholder group provided you all alternative reports. We have not received those alternative reports. So if you could describe them a little more.
Well, I think this is actually from DNR. I think this is Maryland DNR's actual data that they put out on State Forest Conservation Program reports from 2010 to 2017. So I'm talking about state-level data, not from an outside group or anything. This is a government agency.
So that data is provided by each county to the state?
Gotcha.
We provided the council and the auditor the data that Office of Planning and Zoning provides every year to Maryland DNR.
Okay. Well, I guess, because I'm looking at some data that I was provided, that the source for that is these DNR reports. And it shows that over, from 2010 to 2017, so that eight-year period there, including public and private projects, that the actual net loss in terms of acres for our county was 1,640, which is approximately, I'm trying to do math in my head, but I think it's a little under 700 acres different between what the administration has said at 2311 was lost in terms of acres and what DNR has reported is lost. So I guess where I'm going with this is, we've asked a lot of questions about data, the council has, and I know that you all have done your doggone dis to get us what you can. But I think one of the struggles that I have with this bill, and I've noted this a number of times, is it's hard to make good policy when we haven't come to a place where we all agree on the scope of the problem. No one's saying there's not a problem. We're just trying to understand what the problem is. What's the size of the problem? And where exactly is the problem located in this county so that we can rectify it? And if we can't all get on the same page with objective data, then it makes it hard for us to get good legislation to come out of that. So I think this is where sort of one of my struggles is with this, because I was presented with some additional data that suggests that in the same time period that Anorundal County lost 1,640 acres of forest, Prince George's County lost 3,102. So they were two and then, about two times as much forest lost as us. And when you combine other counties, Baltimore County, Calvert, Howard, and Prince George's, and compare them to Anorundal, it's about three times more in those surrounding jurisdictions as compared to what we lost. So I've heard a lot of the messaging on this that says, we're the, we're the leader, we're the worst in the state, we're the most egregious example of forest loss. And I'm just not sure if the data that I'm looking at supports that. And I'm trying to understand if the data was cherry-picked, or if the data was misunderstood, or what happened so that we can get to a place where we're all on the same page. So again, I know it was a long segue, and I'll welcome any answers, but...
Well, so let me address data for just a couple of minutes. As I joked with Councilwoman Hare the other day, I love data and love trees, so this is perfect for me.
Perfect.
So we have thus far provided the county council five separate data sets. Each one of those data sets was developed by a different organization for a different reason, with different methods. The one data set that, that we provided that showed we were responsible for more forest loss than the rest of our neighboring counties combined, that comes from the U.S. EPA. That was total forest loss estimated by the U.S. EPA Chesapeake Bay Program Model. Not just due to development, total forest loss. And we presented it that way.
Okay.
Now, the data that we provided from planning and zoning, and I think the data that you're referencing, Councilman, is just for development projects. Those development data, even that you're referencing, was 1,640 acres lost per year. That's still over 200 acres of forest loss just to development in Anorundal County alone. Then there were other data sets as well that we, we provided that went up to 615 acres of, of tree canopy loss, which again, that's not just from development, that's from any kind of tree canopy. Land cover data suggesting the same 600 acres. But I think the piece that we felt was most compelling, and that we started looking at so many months ago and also provided you, was individual forest conservation worksheets from development projects that showed kind of legal clearing, what's allowed under the current law. And in 2017, there were two projects alone that combined for over 200 acres of loss. One of them, Tanyard Cove Creekside Village, had 108 acres of legal loss, nothing wrong there. Parkside, a subdivision called Parkside, had 111 acres of legal net forest loss. So the administration saw that information provided by OPZ and said, we have a problem. And that is why we crafted a bill to legally lower the amount of forest loss you could have on any individual development site. But let me just emphasize again, not even that latest data set that you just provided, Councilman, shows anything less than hundreds of acres of loss per year in Anorundal County.
Yeah, I'm tracking with you on that, and I guess that also would include forest that was lost for stream restoration projects, for public projects, in addition to private development. So we're not talking about 200 acres solely attributable to private development activity. I think what we're actually talking about is 205 acres on average over the last eight years for a variety of purposes, including public projects, schools, Crofton High School, stream restoration projects. So those are part of that number. And I guess where I would then delve into it, because there's some suggestion that maybe institutional uses should be treated differently than other types of uses, because maybe we want to put a higher priority on institutional uses, and so we want to give them a lower threshold. To what degree do we think that's part of the issue? Because if we stop all the private development, let's just play this out, for instance. You stop all the private development, and so, that's fine. How many acres a year are we taking down for institutional development? How much do we impact this 205 acres a year number? And I don't know that anyone's been able to tell us that yet. So that's sort of what we've, at least I've been trying to get at, is explain to me the problem, and explain it to me in a way that's not just these big, huge numbers that immediately are front-page numbers. You know, they're headline numbers, they're great. But we aren't here to make policy on headlines. We're here to make policy in the weeds, and understand this as somebody who testified earlier, as well if not better than the folks who are testifying on the bill in support of it. We've got to know this stuff inside and out, and I just don't feel like we've been presented with that data despite many, many questions over the past month that we've asked for it.
So are there outstanding questions that the council has asked, or yourself, that you haven't had answers to?
Yeah, my question would be, if we, let's just say for the sake of argument that we agree that it's 1,640 acres that have been lost based on these reports, 205 acres a year. How much of that is attributable to institutional development? How much is attributable to stream restoration? How much is attributable to private development?
We can try to get you those numbers, but again, like I started off with, we haven't seen that data set. So if you could share that data set with us so that we could go to the right person at DNR to contact, that would be great.
If I may, I'll just pass that over to the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Certainly, absolutely. And as I said, I think that would be helpful for all of us to understand the problem. And then maybe even if you could break it further to say, of the private development, we're further looking at this much of it was done on rural areas, this much was done in high-density residential, this much was done for commercial. That helps us understand exactly what problem it is we're trying to solve. Because until we agree on the objective data, and until we agree on where the problem is, it's very hard for this council to come up with the right solution. That's all I have for now.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to put on the record that I have a very different view from my colleague, Mr. Volkey, in that I don't think we need to wait to have some sort of very close agreement on objective numbers of acreage lost or acreage gained. I think the overarching theme that has been part of every conversation that I've had, every article that I've read, every email that I've received, overwhelming numbers of emails I've received that have said to pass this bill, to not weaken it, to, to strengthen it even, although I don't think I've gotten as many of those as probably Councilwoman Radveen has, for example. But the, the overarching theme is that it's an emotional one, an emotional value that we don't, that we, or I should say, the residents of this county do not want to see trees cut down. It doesn't matter whether that's one tree, 10 trees, 100 trees, how many acres, however you want to categorize it, where the tree was located. They're sick of seeing trees cut down in this county. And they're asking us to, to do something, whether that's the administration or the council or both, they are acting, asking their elected officials to do something to, to require that anybody who's even thinking of cutting down a tree for some purpose would consider doing something else first. Can they accomplish their purpose without cutting down a tree first? Can they, can they make a slight, slight adjustment? Do they maybe need to make a larger adjustment? Can they support a forest mitigation bank instead? And I think the last thing that people really want to see is that anybody should be able to preferentially pay their way out of the obligation to try to keep as many healthy or in good condition trees, you know, up and living and being a part of our, our environmental infrastructure that we depend on. So out of everything we've heard, quite frankly, I don't care about the data anymore at this point. I've seen enough, and I'm convinced that what the people want is for us to do the best that we can to protect the trees from being cut down. And that what we're going to do here tonight is a lot of the fine details, it's the sausage making, it's not pretty, it's not going to be all that easy for the public to follow necessarily. But I also want to say, I'm not cosponsoring any of the amendments that may be offered tonight. I've chosen instead to see where we end up tonight and consider kind of batting cleanup at the next, at the next meeting. Because I think we've just reached a point where we are so saturated with possible ideas and amendments that we really can't see our way forward and have further public discussion about what that way forward needs to be without getting down to the business of amending the bill.
Thank you. And before we move into amendments, I just want to thank everybody that's reached out. My colleagues have had thousands of emails, both for and against, and we try to reply as much as possible, we're patient. So we again thank everybody for testifying and, you know, coming out and being a part of it. And as stated by my colleague, you know, these aren't easy things. You try and get to an end where something gets done. Because then what ends up happening, nothing gets done. So it's like, where, where do you go? So just open that up, and let's go right into amendments. Madam Secretary, let's start with Amendment 1. Could you please read that into the record?
Amendment number 1, this amendment corrects inconsistency in the amount of acres required to be replanted for any acre of forest cover cut or cleared above the forest conservation threshold.
Is there a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is an administration amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment corrects, I would call it an omission in the original bill. We had meant to consistently change the reforestation ratio from 1/4 to 1/2, and in this reference, it was not changed. So as, as the fine print says at the bottom of the amendment, we would urge you to pass this to make the bill consistent throughout.
Okay, any discussion amongst the council? Okay, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 1.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment number 1 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 2.
Amendment number 2, this technical amendment corrects a typographical error.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, introduced by Ms. Pickard?
Sorry. Ms. Fiedler? Thank you. This is just a technical amendment that corrects a typo error.
Okay. Administration?
No opposition, Mr. Chair.
Are you sure?
We're good on this one.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 2.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 2 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 3.
Amendment number 3, this amendment prohibits the application of the new requirements contained in Bill number 6819 to certain applications and permits submitted prior to December 15, 2019.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussions by the sponsors?
Yes, so this one actually was born out of sort of recommendations in the past from the Office of Law. If everyone will recall back, it was a bill that actually I introduced along with Mr. Pruski, Bill 10118. We had a pretty lengthy discussion at that point. It was a noise mitigation bill, and there was a pretty lengthy discussion about grandfathering clauses. The grandfathering clause that was introduced and supported by the administration was based off of a submission of a sketch plan, et cetera. And that is what this amendment does. The public testimony on that, or the public hearing the night was January 22, 2019. And actually, there was a little bit of colloquy between Councilwoman Pickard and Mr. Swain. So I went back and pulled the, the video of it. Councilwoman Pickard says, "If I could defer to Mr. Swain regarding the concern with projects currently in the pipeline that are at the approval process and have gone through planning and were essentially changing the rules, could constitute a taking or partial taking and leave us in legal jeopardy with the county." Did I get that right? Question mark? Mr. Swain answers, "Greg Swain, Acting County Attorney, that is correct." For anyone who's interested, that's minutes 34, 30 to 35 of that particular public hearing. Mr. Barron spoke after that. He then said, "We, the administration, understand the concern expressed, and we strongly support this bill with these amendments." So this amendment brings that particular grandfathering clause more closely in line with what has been previously suggested by the county attorney and Office of Law and supported by the administration.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what, what this amendment does, in essence, is it changes the grandfathering provision from what was in the bill, which was based on the acceptance, or the approval, rather, of a application, to the submission of an application. So this is a much more lenient grandfathering clause, to be clear. We have been discussing this language with the council members. We appreciate that they've made some accommodations to some of our concerns, so I want to thank you. We prefer the grandfathering in the bill as submitted, but if, if this is the way that the council wants to do it, we feel this is the right way for you to do that. But do that knowing that it is much more lenient, and it will allow applications that have not yet been submitted to get in under this new deadline and be considered under the old rules. And that is a fairly substantial universal project. I think we ran the numbers for what's in the pipeline, and it's over 100. Is that correct, Mr. Johnston?
I've still got Mr. Volkey's numbers in my head. I'll have to go back and look, but...
It's, it's, it's a, this would capture much more projects than the original grandfathering, is my point.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly appreciate those comments, Mr. Trumbauer. I think what, what I'm sort of going to ask you about is, we sit up here a lot, and in the 10 months that this council has been together convening on a regular basis, we've heard a lot about fairness. We've heard about fairness as it comes down to the benefits that we give to employees, about the types of laws that we're creating, about the things that we're doing. And so I guess what I would simply pose to the administration is this. One of the concerns that I know that this council had is, you can certainly change the rules. This is a substantial change to the rules. But when we are looking at folks who have, under the current rules, said, I'm going to play ball and do certain things, and then midstream, we change the rules on them in the middle of the game, I guess my question would be, does the administration agree that's a fair thing to do, to change the rules in the middle of the game?
Well, Councilman, I think we fundamentally agree that this is a fairness issue. I think what, what, what we're talking about is just two different ways to apply that. We deliberately put a grandfathering provision in the bill as introduced. Now, it was a stricter grandfathering provision than this is. But we've been talking about this bill for months now, and I think anything, our view of it is, for things that have been in the system for a while, that are on the verge of being approved, that have a significant investment in them, totally agree that is an equity issue, and, and we acknowledge that, and that's why we put grandfathering in. Our concern with loosening the grandfathering is only that projects will be rushed to get in under this new deadline, and that's why we appreciate the fact that this language does include a date certain. So I'm going to presume for a moment, maybe based on the sponsor line, that this amendment will pass. In that, in that event, now there will be a date certain, so I think the, the development community at least has that consistency, that they can get their applications in by that date from this point forward, and that is something that we do appreciate.
I guess the only thing I would follow up with is, you're positing this in terms of more lenient, more restrictive, stronger, weaker. These are terms that we've seen quite a lot in the press and things like that.
Sure.
I guess what I would ask you is, do you find this to be a fairer application of the grandfathering provision?
I think that's a, I don't, I don't view that to be an objective question. I guess you, you said that I was positing, I'm exercising my right to posit on behalf of the administration, and, you know, we, we prefer the grandfathering that, that was in the original bill, but we have to acknowledge that the council has worked hard on this. You've included our folks to get this right. And so if we had to choose, we'd choose ours, but seeing what you're doing with this, if this is the way you guys want to go, we're going to live with it.
I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Radveen, then Councilwoman Fiedler.
So this is, I guess, a question for Mr. Swain. Councilwoman Hare raised the issue of possible takings issue, or some sort of liability for the council, you know, for sort of changing the rules midstream for projects that are already in the pipeline. And I would just, my, my one sort of holdout on this particular amendment is an application for approval of a sketch plan. And the sketch plan is the very first step, and it hasn't even been approved yet. Would that be something that would open up liability for the county in terms of a taking, in your opinion?
I don't believe that either of these grandfathering provisions puts the county at risk for taking.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked extensively about this section of the bill. I just want to thank you for acknowledging that we did provide a hard date as kind of a, I don't want to use the word compromise, but it, it was something that I think was important for myself to have included in this amendment, so thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you. One of the questions I have, if you don't mind me making it public, Mr. Kai-Ziegler, you and I had a conversation that the Planning and Zoning Office has also had a shift in policy in not approving environmental modifications. Could you make sure that's a part of the record as well? Because I think we're making an assumption here, whether this bill goes forward or not, there's also been a shift in what we're holding folks accountable for. So could you discuss that? Because I think it's important for people to hear.
Sure. And, and when we talk about environmental modifications, we do have some policy guidance over the last few months from the administration on perhaps an approach to thinking about how we consider those. Historically, our office approved 99% of all the modifications requested, whether they were environmental or other things. Keep in mind, an administrative modification is not dissimilar to a variance request that would typically go to the Board of Appeals. The difference is our modifications don't have the benefit of a public hearing and the public's right to come in and share their views in front of a Board of Appeals. So in my relatively short time here, we've made every effort to, I'm going to say, take the administration's policy directive into account as we do look at environmental modifications. We are not denying them all. What we do find is we need better justifications than have been provided for in the past. That does make it harder. And the other thing we're doing is, when an applicant requests a modification for an environmental issue, we're asking them to consider what type of mitigation they are willing to offer to assist us if we were to come to the conclusion that that modification was necessary. We're also finding, and again, I spoke to this a couple of weeks ago, that by denying modifications or indicating a preference that we don't receive them, we are finding applicants who were 2/3 of the way through the entitlement process be frustrated with the position we've taken, but then come back with revised or amended plans where, interestingly[1703.78] interestingly enough, they produce a plan that is in complete compliance with the code and we're able to move forward and approve it. That's been an interesting, I'm going to say, experience that we've all had. I think a good trend for the county overall, because that's the goal, is to have a set of rules that are consistent and consistently applied, that everyone works with, both the development community and the community at large, who watches how we do the business that we do. Did that answer you?
Yes. Thank you. Councilwoman Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think so to follow up on that, then, is it fair to say that regardless of the language in this amendment, everyone who's submitting a sketch plan, final plan, anything like that to your office, you're holding them accountable for, we'll call it, smart development and making sure that there's not unnecessary requests for modifications and things like that?
Making every effort to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Swain, I had one quick question for you. So this kind of is a topic that we're getting into with the modifications and the requirements for those things and grandfathering and who can approve and deny and all that. I'm aware of a May 14, 2019 memo that the administration sent that indicates that, I'm quoting here, "Further modification requests that would result in adverse environmental impacts will not be approved, even if accompanied by appropriate documentation unless there is a clear and definitive showing that the alternative proposal will mitigate and minimize environmental impacts through the use of design alternatives, or the requestor agrees to the conditions set forth by the Planning and Zoning Officer to secure mitigation of adverse environmental impacts." I guess my question to you on that particular memo is, that seems to be almost adding additional requirements to the code by the county executive absent either executive order or absent legislation from this council. Is that a legal way for the county to add additional requirements to the code?
Well, I think the... When you look at the requirements for modification, I mean, one of the problems we, I think, historically have with modifications is, we had a fairly strict checklist of elements you would have to meet for modifications. And it seemed to be that modifications were being granted without those elements being adequately addressed. When you look at some of those elements, they are fairly general, and some of them point to health, safety, and welfare. So the... I think the focus and part of the reason for that policy was to require applicants to meet those... Meet the criteria for a modification and express how they met the requirements for the modification. So some of the language that was discussed in the policy memo was picking up the requirements under its 172108 of the county code. The ability to attach conditions to modifications has always been there, and that's within the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Officer.
But the idea that the county executive could come down and say, "Hey, we're going to impose these additional two requirements," even if you meet all the other stuff, even if you give us the documentation, is that an appropriate way to legislate?
Well, it's not legislating. It's taking the existing requirements that were there and saying, "This is how you meet those requirements," because we were not getting that previously. And I don't have 172108 right in front of me. But when you look at that list, when you look at...
Lori Rhodes, always on the spot, ladies and gentlemen. Always on the spot.
But, you know, the conditions include minimization and mitigation of environmental impacts, things like that, which were not being addressed adequately. So the policy memorandum was not saying, "This is new law." The policy memorandum was saying, "We're going to enforce the existing law, and this is what we want to see with these modification requests."
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Rodvien? No. Okay. I'm sorry. Was that nay?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment includes additional provisions relating to modifications from forest conservation requirements as required by state law.
Motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the sponsors? Councilwoman Pickard?
I get the pleasure of introducing this amendment. As it states, this is an amendment to include additional provisions relating to modifications from forest conservation as required by state law. We are taking language right out of state law and adding it to the bill as such.
Any further discussion? Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Generally, we have no opposition to this amendment. We would just note, there's some question on whether all of it will be viewed as meeting state law as it is, but we don't have... We just reserve the right to talk to DNR about how... What happens once this gets adopted. But we don't oppose this amendment.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the...
Sorry?
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Rodvien.
Could I just ask a little bit more? What are your concerns about, you know, the compliance with state law?
I'm going to let Mr. Johnston articulate that, or you can pass it over to Mr. Swain. But, okay. If you would, Mr. Swain.
Well, the way the process for a variance is set out in state law is by statute, and it does include these two elements, the unwarranted hardship element and the water quality element. There is a third element, though, that it's kind of a vague element, but the statute says that the variance process must be designed in a manner consistent with the spirit and intent of the Forest Conservation Act. So it doesn't tell you how you satisfy that, but it says that it must be. When we drafted Bill 6819, what we did is, we looked to the model ordinance, which is something that's prepared by DNR as a model for jurisdictions to use as their local forest conservation program. And the model ordinance has a number of additional elements that they've come up with. And so we used those elements in the original bill because our feeling was, how better to reflect the intent of the Forest Conservation Act than to look at the model ordinance drafted by the state agency that has to enforce the Forest Conservation Act? So we felt that that fully encompassed that, and we know other jurisdictions do that. Montgomery County does that. They take those elements out of the model ordinance. So by looking at this amendment, Number Four, I can't say with certainty whether this meets the spirit of intent of the Forest Conservation Act. We felt pretty certain that our original bill did because we were using their model. So I think that's the basis for the level of uncertainty we have. Certainly, these two elements are required. No question about that. Whether this satisfies the intent is kind of an open question.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Rodvien?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Four is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five. This amendment requires the Planning and Zoning Officer to provide a decision on an application for a modification within 45 days after the date the verification required by subsection A5 was submitted.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there someone who'd like to speak on this? Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All of the discussions surrounding modifications, this amendment just sets a timeline on when planning and zoning is required to make a decision on those modification applications.
Okay. Any further discussion? Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have no conceptual objection to this, but I want to be clear. If you instruct Mr. Kai Ziegler to make a decision in 45 days, he will make a decision. It just may not be the one that the applicant wants to hear. So we had previously gotten a draft of this, and we appreciate the conversations we've had with council members on this. We had suggested giving a little bit more room to maneuver at 60 days. I think that would make us more comfortable. But I'll let Mr. Kai Ziegler speak on any specifics on this amendment.
Sure. The reality is, when we get modification requests, now they need to come in as individual requests, not bundled in a package. And it's not uncommon for the... I'm going to say, the request and the justification to be lacking, meaning there would be little chance of success for the applicant for us to grant the modification. So what does happen is, there is a bit of a back and forth that can occur in order for us to have what we think is a complete package that could actually be considered. So while we can put a timeline, we're assuming that we have an application, everything is there, and we can make the decision. The reality of the work we do is, it doesn't always happen that way.
Councilwoman Fiedler, and then...
Thank you. And please correct me if my memory is wrong. I believe the initial discussion was 30 days, but we increased it to 45, considering the 15 days that's already required, so it's already built in. So the 45 is just adding the 30 to the 15 that's already.
Sorry, Madam Councilwoman. That doesn't match my memory, but...
Okay.
Mr. Johnston may have a better memory than me?
No, we were actually going in the same direction, but we thought the number was 45 that was proposed, and we think it should be 60, because as you referenced, here in the amendment, it says, "The date verification was submitted." In another portion of the code preceding this, Mr. Kai Ziegler now has to wait a mandatory amount of 15 days minimum before he can even consider a modification. So by saying 45, you're really only giving him 30, and we think it should say 60 so that he has 45, if that makes sense.
Councilwoman Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question in terms of the date the verification was submitted. Is that the date someone initially submits a modification, or the date they get in all the justification that you're saying might be the result of the back and forth?
Well, in theory, there would be both, but it doesn't always happen that way. We do not... We rarely get a development application with all the modifications that the applicant thinks they need in a super-complete package that is actionable. There are times there is information missing, and we're talking about a modification on Forest Conservation Act now, but the reality is, the actual modification request may be premature or too late, depending on what the issue is with the application. We have to marry up the modification request with the actual development application. And part of it is, is I think historically, we've had folks come in and ask for the modification before they had even gelled on what their development application was, thinking, "I don't... You know, I want to do this project, and I don't think I can make it work unless the planning office is willing to grant modifications to a variety of things," without really understanding what the environmental features are on the site and really understanding what the actual development application is. We're happy to respond, I guess, at any point, whatever time limit that the council wants to apply. It's just keep in mind, it's a very fluid thing. We would be making decisions, I think, often without complete information.
But the way I read this is, sort of, at the time, you have complete information. So is it... I mean, is it unreasonable for 45 days from the date you get the justification and the verification that you've asked for?
Like I said, we can make a decision at any point in the process. What I'm trying to say is, we often do not have, in the first 45 days of when the application comes in, a justification that would be actionable other than denial.
Yeah. And let me just add, the verification is not verification that OPZ has all the information they need. It's simply verification that the applicant sent notice out to all property...
Okay. Thank you. That's my question. Okay.
Also, or that it was discussed at a community meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
If we could have our council attorney, Ms. Schuett, wanted to chime in. Go ahead.
I feel that there's some confusion about this and what was agreed upon, because in the... You know, there've been so many drafts of very many provisions, but originally, this just was one sentence that said, "The Planning and Zoning Officer shall give a decision within 45 days." The response back, I think, was what you're saying now, and that is, you know, what comes in first may not be any really very good, and so maybe we should build in a... Your comment back was, or somebody's comment back was, that maybe we should build in the idea that we'd have to come in with your modification and talk about it and get some comments before you actually filed it, so the 45 days didn't run from that. But we never got language back on that, so... And I also thought that this was the language that you requested in one of your emails, and I also understood that, and I could be wrong, I'm not saying I'm right, but I also understood that because you couldn't do anything for 15 days after the verification that the notice had been sent, so you had that 15 days, plus you had an additional 45 days from that verification, so this was really a 60-day amendment. That's what I thought I understood from what you were saying. So there's some miscommunication here.
So, Madam Counsel, I would say, what you're suggesting with the... We wanted to get to the same place, where we would build in the extra 15 days. So we don't oppose this amendment. The council can pass this. We're just issuing a word of warning, be careful what you ask for. If you want to play it safe, the easiest way to do that, in my opinion, I think in our opinion, withdraw this, replace the number 45 with 60, and we'll say, we'll sit here and support the amendment. We're not opposing it now. We're just making sure you understand the consequences, the potential consequences of what this would do.
I did not understand those consequences to be there, and I thought that you were... I thought we were going to get language that would allow for the... Getting the comments first before the 45 or 60-day time period.
Right. And I think this is most likely one of those issues where there was too many things going back and forth, and it got missed on one of our ends, so...
Okay.
It's up to the council, obviously, but you can pass this, or we could change the 45 to 60, or we could do something else. But we support the intent of this.
Okay. Would you be amenable to the idea of a different amendment on a different day, maybe, that would say what I thought was one of the things that was included in it? And that is, the application isn't actually filed until after you've met with OPZ and you've gotten some comments on the submission? Something along those lines? Those...
I don't know that that helps, because we won't know the state of the development application and its relationship to the modification. In every instance, we can offer comments to stress we are working under policies and there it's difficult, but keep in mind, sometimes we get modification requests before we actually have fully formed development applications. I think what happens, what the reality that will happen as a result of this discussion, though, is, in the future, with if there's to be a time limit, the development community is watching, they're listening, and they will work very, very hard to ensure that their modification, application, or request has a much higher degree of justification in relation to where their development application is. So I think this whole discussion will be instructive to everyone.
And let me add that I... The reason the 15-day period's in there in the first place was to prevent modification requests from coming in and being granted before the community might have had a chance to weigh in. So it was basically a 15-day hold. Everybody who would be impacted, most people would be able to get notice, be able to provide whatever comments they wanted, before the Planning and Zoning Officer could even look at it or consider it. So it is kind of a period where they're not in a position to judge whether the application's complete until after the 15-days runs, until they actually study it themselves.
Right. What I don't like that I'm hearing is that you will comply with this requirement, and you know, in many cases, we may not like the result because you're just going to say no, you know? And that's not the intention of this, is to... Like, with comments, there's the... You know, the comments are given, and then OPZ responds, and there's timeframes for doing that. That's all this was intended to do, it's not, I think. It's not intended to require that you do a snap decision and deny based on this. I mean, this reminds me of the provision in our Maryland constitution that judges are supposed to render decisions within 30 days. Never happens. Anyway.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey.
Mr. Chairman, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So bear with us, but I fully thought that adding the language to this amendment of, within 45 days of the date the verification was submitted, that the verification process was the 15 days, the 45 made it all 60. That's where... That's how we got to this language in the first place. So if that's not what we're talking about, if there isn't an initial 15-day that you're going through, then the 45 days starts after this verification, then we might want to consider pulling this amendment and getting the language right, because we were looking for a 60-day... We agreed to extend to a 60-day, but if we're going to be having a 15-day process, and then now we're going to be at 75 days, I'm really confused.
I think the point here is that this really is only giving the Planning and Zoning Officer 30 days to consider the modification request, because once the verification comes in, he can't act on it for 15 days, so that's gone. Then you have 30 days for him to review it and make a decision. So it's really not 45 days. 60 days would have been 45 days for him to consider the modification request, because it would include the 15-day period when the application's basically on hold to give the people in the community a chance to respond to the request.
If I might, Councilwoman, if you guys will pull this now, we will use the time while we're looking at other amendments to try and find the language that you're talking about and get that to you. If it works, great. If not, reintroduce this, pass it. It's not the end of the world. We don't oppose it. We just... I think we share the interest in getting it right, so...
No, definitely want to get it right. We thought we had it right.
Right.
So...
We'll get there.
So we have two other folks before we do any withdraw. I don't know if you, you know, Councilman Volkey and then...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see this as a little simpler, maybe, than it's being played out. Call me late to the party, because I wasn't involved in all of the discussions on this, but it seems to me like this does two things.
I just, I see this as a little simpler, maybe, than it's being played out. Call me late to the party, because I wasn't involved in all of the discussions on this, but it seems to me like this does two things. One, it puts a time clock on OPZ to give an up or a down on this, and if you don't like it, there are appeal rights. And two, it puts the onus on the development community to come in with a tight modification package. And frankly, if they walk in the door and it's not a good package, then I think at that point, you know, OPZ is probably going to deny it. The development community has a lot of very smart people involved. They will figure out how to put a tight package in front of OPZ. So I'm just not sure why we're worried about this extra 15-days. They're going to react. I think, of all the things that we're changing in this, this seems to be pretty straightforward.
Okay, as the chair, I think that there's a general sense in the room to withdraw. If I can get the, the person who made the motion, and the second to withdraw this amendment, we can take it out by our rules, am I correct, Ms. Schewitt? So I try to, Ms., Madam Secretary, do we know who made the motion?
Um.
And the second.
We have five sponsors.
I understand that.
So they all need to agree.
Okay.
And, and you don't need a motion to withdraw it?
All right, well, let's go through the five sponsors. Councilwoman Pickard, are you okay withdrawing this?
Yes.
Ms. Fiedler?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Miss, Councilwoman Hare?
Yes.
And Mr. Volkey.
Sure.
Okay. Amendment number five is withdrawn. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number six.
Amendment number six, this amendment makes language changes to conform to the model ordinance in COMAR, subtitle 19, forest conservation, 08.19.03.01.5.1d.
Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, sponsors?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
This amendment conforms language to the simplified forest delineation for sites other than linear projects to language in COMAR.
Okay, administration?
No objection.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number six is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven, this amendment deletes county-designated greenways from section 176303B1.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion by the sponsors? Councilman Volkey?
Thank you. So again, this is a relatively straightforward amendment, it removes county-designated greenways. One of the reasons this needs, one of the reasons this needs to be deleted is that if one goes on the GeoCortex data layer that we have for the county and puts in the county-designated greenways, you will notice that many of them are now parking lots and other buildings, because it was done in the early 2000s, and it has not been updated. So this is really a pretty antiquated reference, and if the county had kept up with that, maybe it would be different, but at this point, it doesn't make any sense to have it in here.
Thank you, administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Volkey, we oppose the amendment, and Councilman Volkey makes the point why we oppose it, because there's, there's no protections for the greenways. So they are getting developed. We want to protect our greenways, that's the whole point of them. So we would oppose the, the striking of the greenways from this bill, but we would ask if the council does end up striking the greenways, we would ask to put some new language in that protects the large contiguous areas of remaining forested land in the county. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I just want to comment that I'm in complete agreement with administration on this one. I think the concept of the greenways, even though it hasn't been utilized by the county, is such an important concept when we're talking about forest conservation. It's contiguous forest that's really key in terms of habitat, in terms of a lot of the benefits that come with retaining forests. We're not, we oftentimes have been talking about trees, but we're really, what we, you know, again, the name of this legislation is the Forest Conservation Act, and if we're not talking about contiguous consecutive trees, then we're not really talking about forests, and forests is what we should be aiming to, or striving to save here. So I just want to get that on there for the record.
Thank you, Councilman Pickard. I'm trying to go with the lights came on.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Pickard, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I agree that this bill is all about protecting our forests, we will have subsequent amendments that talk about parts of the county that are forested and are identified as such through the forest interior dwelling species and large tracts of land such as that, but by removing greenways, we are removing areas of the county that are no longer green. Now, when we go through the GDP process, we will be updating our greenways map, and in that process, we can move forward with incorporating greenways potentially in our land use conversation and our land use code, which would actually be more accurate. And I would suggest, when we do that, we inform people that they live in the greenway, similar to how we inform people that they live and have property within the critical area. If we're going to be treating large areas of land like we do the critical area, folks should know that that's where their property is, and land use designations will apply. So rest assured, we, we do have amendments that, by removing this, we, we will be looking at that conversation about FIDS. I have a whole new vocabulary, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion by the council. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number seven.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, amendment number seven is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight.
Amendment number eight, this amendment incorporates the language of COMAR 27.01.09.04 with respect to critical area habitats for forest interior dwelling birds and other species.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone like to speak on this?
I'm up again, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you. So again, this is the sort of companion piece to what we just did. This expands the protections for forest interior dwelling birds and other species, and it creates the same protections that are provided currently in critical area law.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, we appreciate that this is the way that the council is going to deal with those large contiguous areas of forest. The one thing we'd point out is that this references at least 100 acres, and I believe that according to the model DNR language, they reference 50 acres, that would be our preference. FIDS is not my area of expertise, but Mr. Johnson is to my left and would be happy to talk more about it.
All, just for the record, the existing bill has 50 acres, and that language is pulled not just from DNR guidance, but also from Prince George's County Woodland Conservation Ordinance Code language.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I just want to express my agreement with the administration, that I think by starting with allowing protection for smaller parcels of land, we'll ultimately be able to protect more land, if we're not only protecting the ones that are 100 acres or larger. So again, I would greatly prefer the, the 50 acres that's mentioned in the model, and Prince George's, you said Prince George's County as well. So I'm disappointed to see that this is, you know, set that bar higher before it gets the same protection.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to ask you a question, because I see there's an either/or here in the amendment. So there's 100 acres in that first piece, but the second piece is just the riparian forests of at least 300 feet in width that are documented breeding areas adjacent to wetlands or regulated streams. There's no acreage minimum on that, and that is actually, you all had a minimum acreage in the original bill of 50 acres, so we're actually taking the minimum acreage out of that, making it could be 10 acres under that second prong, right?
We really appreciate that.
Okay, so that piece, we actually are lowering that. Thank you.
Let me just add one other point on this amendment. In the original bill, there was no requirement that the, these tracts have to be documented FIDS habitat, which is now in this amendment. So I'm not certain what documentation that refers to, or how that's established, that these are documented breeding areas, or that they are document, yeah, that they are documented breeding areas, in addition to being the areas, you know, the, the area limitations, which is, which seems to be a substantial difference from the original bill. Did not have that requirement.
Ms. Schewitt wanted to chime in, because I believe she'll drop the amount, if Ms. Hare would yield.
Go ahead, no, absolutely.
That's okay.
Am I allowed to talk now?
You're allowed to talk.
Okay. So the COMAR provision that's referenced, I think, in the explanation of what this is, it specifically says, existing riparian forests, those relatively mature forests of at least 300 feet in width, which occur adjacent to streams, wetlands, or the bay shoreline, because this only applies in the critical area, and which are documented breeding areas. So whatever that means is what, I mean, that's what I would think is applicable in the critical area, and so whatever issues there are with determining whether it's a documented breeding area should already be out there.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess, no comment, okay. Councilwoman Lacy, and then we'll come back over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I, I would prefer the administration's, like, protection for the 50 acres. I don't, I don't know how many 100-acre woods we have, and it could be a little bit like Eeyore thinking about this bill, and whether or not, how much progress we're going to be able to make here, but I'm not, I know that, now that we've amended so that the greenways are out, I would want some kind of language like this, but not this. This is an example of a place I would look to do kind of a reconciling amendment in the next go-round.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask anyone on the panel that might be able to answer, do we know who is tasked with documenting breeding areas for FIDS? Is there anyone that actually does that?
Are you looking for a specific individual?
Not, or an agency, or an entity, office, whatever you've got.
What I can tell you is that in the critical area, FIDS habitat is mapped, potential FIDS habitat is mapped on development plans, and so we would need to bring in our critical area experts to tell us exactly how that's assessed by staff.
So is it possible that because we're requirement, requiring documented breeding areas, that this could protect no land, because we're requiring documentation?
We, I don't know that we can answer that. I mean, it's, I just don't know. First of all, we'd have to find out where are the 100-acre tracts or greater, then we'd have to determine who is it, what entity makes that evaluation. I would be hopeful that the answer is, that this doesn't mean that, that this provision is not applied, but I can't, I don't know that any of us can say that with certainty. Did you want to say something about DNR's layer?
No, my colleague next to me indicates DNR has a FIDS layer, but we believe it's somewhat dated.
And so documentation might actually present a barrier to providing the protection that I think even the proponents of this amendment intended. Is that correct?
Not sure how to answer that.
On that basis, I would.
What I, what I, what I can say, Councilwoman, is, we, we wanted to keep the greenways in. The greenways are out now. This at least preserves something, but what that universe of preservation is, I don't think any of us can say with clarity. But I will say that if you're interested in greenways and preservation of large contiguous areas of forest, we're happy to continue to work with you on, on that issue, because we are too.
Would my colleague, I guess maybe this is a question for my colleagues that, you know, are the sponsors of this amendment, would you consider withdrawing this amendment to entertain something that would provide a little more certainty of protection? Maybe the mapping, you said DNR at least provides mapping of likely breeding areas, which actually seems like might be a more reasonable protection anyway, because while some creatures are always going to go back to the same place for breeding, and their breeding areas are going to be predictable, others may not, depending on the, you know, species?
I can promise that we could do two things. One thing is, we could survey staff, and they can tell us exactly how this is done in the critical area. And the second thing is, if the council was to withdraw and we were to work on it, we, we also had an idea that in the current law, there is, there is contiguous acres protected, but it doesn't define what contiguous means, and so we would be happy to contain, you know, the size and the location as the definition of those. So I'm just saying, we could not only survey staff to determine what happened to the critical area, but we would also be more than willing to work with you to get to a place we can all agree protects our most vital force.
I guess I, I'm not exactly sure, since there are five co-sponsors, I'm not sure who to address this to.
Well, I think they may have further questions. I know you put in the request, but there's others. And I'm going to do this right now. So we're, we're in the middle of a debate, amendment number eight, it is now 10-10. There's 25 amendments, there's two other bills with numerous amendments. We are not going to get through this. So I just ask my colleagues for the benefit of the public, and also the bill, just to make your questions pointed and comments, again, I know we're trying to get through this, but my understanding is there'll be a public hearing, and this could be further amended, you know, later on. I don't know when the bill end date is, we can bring that up later, but just for the sake of time, please make sure that the questions and responses are pointed, because of time sake, so I'll just.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
And just to correct, we have eight more bills on the agenda tonight.
Correct. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Would it, would a motion to table this bill so that we can take up the other bills out of order, and then come back to this, be appropriate?
I'll ask Madam Secretary.
The point being that after midnight, we, if everything goes and we're here at midnight, we will not be able to vote on the amendments after midnight.
Understood, I guess.
We could continue with public hearings on the rest of the bills and resolutions. We would have to continue with public hearings, but nothing can be voted on after midnight.
I get that, but I guess, Mr. Chair, would, I, hmm?
Let me get through this.
I think my, my point of order question was, would that be out of order? And I guess that's a parliamentary question, is that an out-of-order motion to make to table this at this point, and allow us to then go out of order, take some of these other bills that we have, so that these folks can leave and then come back to this bill?
Well, a couple of things, just to comment, I'll, I'll let her look up that piece. I mean, the intention is, I made that comment, I think we can get through it, to be completely honest with you.
Okay.
And we have the other bills, but again, it depends on the comments.
I just don't want to be disrespectful to everybody who's hearing the other bills.
Yeah, no, 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 but we have other folks waiting for amendments and other things, you know, that are there. But I also wanted to point out, the next meeting, there could be adjustments and other amendments that are brought forward. You know, there's some discussion going back and forth and other things, so just want to make absolutely clear that this is not the end date for the bill. Typically, you have that end date in hand, there's still opportunities to amend the bill.
Mr. Chair, it doesn't expire until after the first meeting in December, and the administration's part will do our best for speedy, concise answers from here forward.
Yes, okay. So let's go back. We had Councilwoman Rodvian ask for a withdraw, but we're still discussing. Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, we've worked really hard on these amendments, and this has been, this is a very complex bill, and I'm a little frustrated that we're talking about FIDS that is currently already studied and reported on in the critical area, and the people at the table here who wrote the bill don't understand it. So I'm comfortable where we are with this amendment. It follows along with how FIDS is, is reported on and studied in the critical area, and I don't know why we would reduce the acreage outside the critical area when we have 100-acre threshold in the critical area. I'm ready to move forward on this amendment and get to number nine.
Okay, moving along, Councilman Volkey, and then we'll work our way across.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things. Number one, I'm surprised that we don't know what contiguous means, because I've had a number of definitional amendments on other bills that I've asked to get passed that haven't been able to get passed on much more complicated topics than contiguous. So that's confusing to me, number one. But number two, I do want to note that the engineers typically, as I understand it, when there is an application, will perform a FIDS study to prove that the birds actually habitate in the area, and that is a bird study conducted by an ornithologist. So that's my understanding of how the engineering actually works on this. Despite no one being able to answer that yet, I understand that is what actually happens.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilwoman Pickard. This amendment is an effort to identify large tracts of forest and apply critical area law to them, because we don't have an up-to-date greenways map. We will be doing that during the GDP, and I have serious concerns of lowering the threshold incentivizes critical area development, in my opinion, to go below what critical area is outside of the critical area.
Councilwoman here?
I think mostly my co-council got at everything, but I just, my one thing is, in the proposed bill, you've said forest interior dwelling species habitat, meaning woodland areas of sufficient sizes to be favorable to the breeding of FIDS. Did you all have an idea of how someone would show that?
Let me, let me be clear for a second. The only thing we're asking you to do on this amendment is change 100 to 50. That was the administration's position. We don't have a problem with this amendment if you change 100 acres to 50, that was our request.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Rodvian, then Councilman Volkey?
For clarification, though, the word documented wasn't in the original, was it?
No.
Okay, so that's, to me, that's a material change.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll just be quick then. To Councilwoman Fiedler's point, I understand where the administration's coming at this, saying 50 versus 100. Do you agree with her that then it incentivizes development in these areas, in the critical area?
No.
You don't?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Any other motions? Okay, we'll move forward. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number Eight is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine, this amendment establishes forest conservation thresholds.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody speaking?
I am.
Councilwoman Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The main change this amendment addresses is to reconfigure the proposed threshold table. I would like to thank the administration for working with us to address where Anarondal County has identified where we want to promote growth. I understand that the administration supports some of this amendment. We were not able to reach full agreement on all points. This amendment holds thresholds constant for parcels five acres or less and for sites inside the targeted growth areas, as well as for institutional uses. It also establishes forest conservation thresholds by land use type in two separate categories, one inside the priority funding area and outside the priority funding areas. By reconfiguring in this way, we are acknowledging where the 2009 GDP-designated growth areas are located. The folks at the table have the amendment in front of you. We have, beyond what I've mentioned in this introduction, we've taken, if you go down the chart, we have raised thresholds. Agriculture and resource areas are staying constant across the board, as well as institutional uses, like we mentioned earlier, like I mentioned earlier. Medium-density residential areas inside the priority funding area is raised to 30% of the site, and outside the priority funding area, 40% of the site. High-density residential areas inside the priority funding area are at 25% of the site and outside at 35% of the site. Mixed use is increased to 20% inside the PFA and 30% outside the PFA. And commercial and industrial areas, we've pushed to 20% of the site and 30% of the, inside the PFA, and 30% of the site outside the PFA. As we've wrestled with this, I know we have not been able to, we compromised on the actual configuration. We were not able to get to a compromised point with the thresholds. We are the first county in the state to raise thresholds, conservation thresholds. And in doing that, before we go through the arduous process of our new GDP, I think this is where we feel comfortable without that updated information and mapping land use, everything else. So, I will leave it at that.
Okay, administration?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this amendment is the result of a lot of discussions with several members of the council. We appreciate that collaboration. We are comfortable with the way this amendment is set up, where instead of the variable being the site size, it's now the type of growth area. So, it separates it by inside the PFA or outside the PFA. We're comfortable with that construct. We like this going forward. Again, this is just a disagreement between the administration and the drafters of the amendment on the numbers that populate the table. This is definitely an increase from current law. We appreciate that. This would, we would be the first jurisdiction, county jurisdiction, to move above those state minimums. But this still doesn't achieve what the administration was hoping to get out of this bill. So, not to belabor the point, but just to pick one example. If you look at the 25% for high-density residential areas inside a priority funding area, if you match up that conservation threshold with how much clearing would be allowed without any mitigation, you're still at 50%. So, that means you could clear half of a site without any required mitigation. But again, this is, this is an improvement over current law. I don't want to minimize that. We would just like to see these percentages moved up a little bit more. So, I want to thank the council members who worked on this. And we got close, but not quite all the way together.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodvian, then Councilwoman Hare.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilwoman Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that sort of this chart and these conversations and whatnot have really highlighted for me the importance of the small regional plans and the general development plan. We need to make sure that we're moving that forward as timely as possible, because certainly, it's a big deal whether you're designated as inside a priority funding area, inside a targeted growth area, or outside both of those. And I know that this sort of has to happen in coordination with the general development plan, and so, it's just sort of a side comment. I know that the concern has been raised to me by a couple of constituents, that perhaps areas that are currently designated as a priority funding area maybe shouldn't be anymore. And so, this bill may affect them differently now than it would when the general development plan gets approved. And I know that those priority funding areas are sort of partially set between the state and the county as part of that process. So, for me, this just highlights how quickly we need to move that process forward, how efficiently we need to move it forward.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number Nine is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Ten.
Amendment Number Ten, this amendment modifies a category in the proposed chart and increases certain existing fees.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a lot of discussions about the presentation of this bill. And the reason that the proposed fee-in-lue's were so high was to incentivize mitigation banks and replanting. We've also had discussions over the challenges to create a mitigation bank in the county. And I have expressed my interest in working to make those more efficient. We currently don't have that in place right now. Understanding that, I think it is important to increase our fees in lieu. They are low compared to other jurisdictions. So, this proposed amendment would increase our fees in lieu by an average of 118%. It also adds one category, so you do have the chart in front of you. Clearing and violation of forest conservation law, we are raising by 275% to $3 per square feet. Fee for abandonment of forest conservation easement that are 35 feet wide or less, with a total area of 10,000 square feet or less, is staying at 75 cents per square foot. And this is carved out based on testimony at our public hearing. We used to allow conservation easements when a development was created to be broken up in backyards of individual parcels. So, there are folks out there who may or may not, based on how their home was transitioned in the sale with the title company, even recognize or know that they have a conservation easement in their backyard. This would keep them at the 75 cent per square foot, acknowledging that they may or may not know that this bill would impact them. The fee for abandonment of forest conservation easements in areas that are more than 35 feet wide with a total area of more than 10,000 square feet, we're increasing this by 65%. Fee in lieu of planting for land outside critical area, but inside the PFA, we are increasing it by 150% to $1 per square foot. For fee in lieu of planting for land outside critical area and outside a priority funding area, we're increasing that by 150% to $1.25 per square foot. For fee in lieu of planting for land inside critical area, we are increasing that by 34% to $2 per square foot of mitigation requirement. And for fee in lieu of planting in the critical area buffer, we're increasing that by 34%, going to $2 per square foot.
Okay, any further discussion, administration?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar to last amendment, really appreciate the conversation with the council members about this amendment. We like a lot of it. We just think that the numbers should be a little bit higher. The numbers that we put forth in the original bill were calculated based on the ecological value that forests can provide over some period of time. So, while this does represent a percentage increase over the current law, the administration would certainly prefer that these numbers be a little bit higher so that we can be sure that the replanting efforts will actually be paid for when fee in lieu is used instead of the developers replanting.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to put on the record that anytime we are increasing fees by 150% or more, these are huge increases. And so, the idea that we haven't quite gotten to that level, I mean, I think for a county that generally has leaned, you know, to be a relatively fiscally conservative county, this is a big jump. And I just hope people recognize that. This is not the county sitting up here, the council, abdicating our responsibility to protect forests. Frankly, with the numbers that we're putting in, we are going to be about at the top of what anybody in the state is charging for this. So, I hope that that's acknowledged across the board. I know there are folks who are, you know, arguing that we should pass this bill with the fees that were in there before, but it's not as though we're slouching on our responsibility.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two points. One, I thought that at our last meeting, the testimony of Mr. Sean McDonough was very persuasive when he talked about his experience in helping to set up and run mitigation banks and the numbers, the figures he provided for what he thought were effective fees. To me, I didn't hear any counterpoint from, from the administration, and I read through his written submission as well. And to me, that seems the more reasonable way to go. Second, I think it's appropriate for us to actually have a pretty high fee for clearing and violation of the forest conservation law. It's intended to be a penalty to encourage people to comply with the law. And so, if it's $3 a square foot or some other number significantly higher than 80 cents a square foot, then already, as long as our fees for sort of, well, just the middle parts of the chart are more reasonable at $1.25 or $1, or even maybe as much as $1.50, I actually think that's good policy. So, I'm going to support this amendment.
Councilwoman Rodvian.
I just want to add another perspective to the conversation on the amount of fee in lieu. The city of Annapolis just passed similar legislation that set their fee in lieu at $10 per square foot. So, we are moving in, you know, a positive direction, stepping up from, I think, what, moving from 40 cents to, 40 cents to $2.50 was in the proposed, and this would be now $40, excuse me, 40 cents per square foot to $1 per square foot in this proposed amendment. I think just by looking at the perspective of what the city of Annapolis has done, we can gain a little bit more perspective on that. It's not as large a jump as we, as we really could make. I also think it's important to remember that the fee in lues are really supposed to be a deterrent. We don't want developers to be paying the fee in lieu. We want them to be taking these other actions. You know, there's lots of options that they have, replanting on-site, where they can have credit for landscaping and street trees, replanting off-site, securing off-site forest conservation easements. Also talking about, you know, the Forest Mitigation Bank, which, you know, we need to find ways to facilitate in the county. But the bottom line is, the deterrent is what really will save trees. You know, when you're talking about an old-growth tree, a replanted tree is going to take, you know, 30 to 50 years to provide the same value of, of an existing old-growth tree. So, you know, I appreciate that this is an attempted compromise. I really just wish it went further.
Just a real quick comment, because many of these things, I asked the auditor and then the blue letter. I know that there was a lot of information that couldn't be gathered, because the GDP's not done. I've also asked with Stephen Kye-Ziegler, where's the public transportation plan? Because we talk about stopping development, but then we add more cars on the road. We're adding more carbon footprint. You know, so one has one versus another, but there can't be an analysis. So, that's why, when I asked the auditor about this, again, it's difficult to pick a, you know, what's the best fee? So, certainly, as this goes forward, and wherever we do, we'll hopefully get that analysis so that this could be raised, modified, whatever else. Because I think everyone agrees up here, whatever fee you set has to be fair and just. And we're coming out with different numbers. But I wanted to, if you just want to chime in some of the challenges you've had with this bill, because I think for the benefit of the public and understanding, you know, typically, we get a, this is a solid response. And I didn't get that from you this time. So, if you could make that a part of the record, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Looking at this, it is, it is very difficult to try to kind of see, because there's so many variables when you do a development as to what can be exempted and what can be cleared, and just trying to get that data so that you can see what would be a reasonable fee or, especially on environmental issues, that information like that is just not available.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Ten.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Ten is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eleven.
Amendment Number Eleven, this amendment eliminates a special modification provision relating to special priority retention areas and requires that all modifications be governed by the general modification provisions as provided by state law.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment eliminates the special modification provision for the special priority retention areas. We will address the priority retention areas with the following amendment, Number Twelve.
Administration?
No opposition to this.
Okay. Madam Secretary, seeing there's no discussion, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Eleven?
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eleven is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Twelve.
Amendment Number Twelve, this amendment puts the special priority retention areas back into the priority retention areas in accordance with current law.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment relocates priority retention areas back into accordance with our current law.
Administration?
Admin supports.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Twelve.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Twelve is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Thirteen.
Amendment Number Thirteen, this amendment requires that a forest conservation plan include protection of certain trees in fair or better condition.
Motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
I motion to withdraw this, considering our previous passed amendments.
Okay, so let's go through, well, we don't have a, if we don't get a motion for a first or second. Yeah, is there anybody that'd like to second it? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, I just missed what happened. We haven't had a...
Correct. You need a motion and a second to move it forward. We've only had a motion, or at least an attempt towards one. And I haven't, is there a second? All right, let's move on then. Thank you. Is that better? All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay. So, Amendment Number Thirteen has been withdrawn?
Correct.
Thank you.
Or technically, for the record, it didn't get a second, however you want to say it in the minutes.
Okay. Oh, it failed for last, okay. I'll read Fourteen. Amendment Number Fourteen, this amendment requires that a forest conservation plan include protection of certain trees in fair or better condition.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, the sponsors? Councilwoman Pickard?
This amendment requires that a forest conservation plan include protection of certain trees in fair or better condition.
Administration?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't believe that this is permissible in state code.
Okay, and we, we know that, that y'all feel that way. But we also know that this is represented in jurisdictions such as Montgomery County
in jurisdictions such as Montgomery County and Prince George's County law. So we'll just roll the dice with the state and see what happens.
Ms. Schewitt, anything there?
I'm not usually a dice roller. But this feels so common sense to me, that it just makes no sense to try to save a tree that is about to either die or not be in good condition. So...
We're not arguing that fact.
I know, I know you're not. Yeah, I think initially you thought the idea sounded good. So I think it is up to DNR, and we'll see what they say.
Counselwoman Rodgian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I raised this issue at some point earlier, but my concern is, what is the process for determining the condition of a tree, whether it is fair or better? That seems like a very subjective standard. So if there is a more concrete standard that would explain when a tree is in fair condition, when is it in better condition? It seems like we could get an argument over tree condition every time we need to apply this amendment.
Typically, that information comes in with the forest and delineation from a registered professional forester, but it's also, can be a subjective issue. You could have 10 people looking at the same tree and come to different conclusions. You're looking at root health, you know, bark, leaving, all those different things. And the other thing we would do is, if we feel that we're getting information that we think is questionable, we would also go out and look. We have some people who are at least reasonably trained in this, but at the end of the day, it is going to be a subjective thing.
Is that a classification? Are these words fair, better, condition? Are those typical classifications used to describe the condition of a tree?
They kind of are, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselwoman Pickard?
I just, you know, this is an issue that comes up in communities and folks who have easements, conservation easements with dead trees, and they're worried they're going to fall on their house. So before they actually move in and have their house built, let's remove the dead trees and save the homeowner's, the headache of having to worry about it falling on their house. That's sort of where we are with this.
Counselwoman Volkey?
You know how I get with definitions. Would you all be open to defining fair or better?
It's a long definition. It's not our amendment, and we put our opposition on the record for the reasons. We're not arguing the concept here. We're just putting forth Mr. Swain's legal opinion and Mr. Johnson's opinion for the record. That's all.
Yep. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 14.
Ms. Rodgian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 14 is adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, I believe they're, want to remove Amendment 15 and 16.
Amendment 15 and 16 are being withdrawn?
Correct.
And all agree?
Is there anyone that doesn't agree? Okay, good, we can move forward.
Okay.
All right. Amendment Number 17. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 17.
Amendment Number 17, this amendment exempts previously developed areas primarily covered by impervious surface, and the exemption applies whether or not the previously developed areas are located in a priority funding area.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody like to speak on this? Counselwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the major concerns with this bill is, where is it directing development? Where is it directing growth? And obviously, one of the places that we want to direct development and growth in this county is away from forested areas and into areas that are already impervious, therefore encouraging redevelopment. That's the purpose of this amendment. I will note, as a side commentary, that I think I will probably, if this passes, put in a bill that may define what primarily means, only because I think that that simply leaves it open for the lawyers to make a lot of money arguing over what primarily means. And, you know, despite my colleagues needing to make a living, I prefer to define things where we can. So I'd encourage passage. Thanks.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The same concern as the previous amendment, we just don't believe that this comports with state code. The language in the bill as introduced was taken directly from the model ordinance. We would just put the concern on the record that this would not be permissible by DNR.
Okay. And just for the record, if I'm not mistaken, this was also in the Montgomery County code as listed for what they had. Okay, any other? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't, I don't, am I?
Nope, go ahead.
Not all.
Sorry.
Which button?
There you go.
This is why I don't roll ducks. I agree with the administration that the language is, I think it's in, is it in the model ordinance? Where does this exemption come from? It's in your bill.
Our language comes from the model ordinance. Nowhere else did we find any reference to this in state code or COMAR or DNR guidance.
Okay. So my only point was that the only place you ever see, even see this exemption is in a model ordinance. It's not in the state code. And so you're seeing in a model ordinance, which only says that the exemption applies if you're in a priority funding area. So there is some risk that this first amendment won't make it, because it goes even, I don't know how COMAR gets away with, I mean, folks who do COMAR get away with going so far beyond what state law says, but somehow they do. But I think we are on slightly shaky grounds to go even further than a model ordinance that goes beyond state law.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselwoman Rodgian?
This is maybe a question for the sponsors, but I'm actually questioning if this amendment, you know, besides the issue of whether or not this is appropriate under state law, if it actually would drive development in the intended direction, if it includes both priority funding areas and non, I'm sorry, I'm getting, my brain's getting a little tired here, non-priority funding areas. So if we're moving that exemption to allow both priority and not priority, wouldn't that actually be sort of spreading the development or encouraging the development to be spread out, as opposed to concentrating in the priority funding areas?
Ms. Schewitt?
I think that the purpose of this is to allow, if you have a shopping center that's now defunct and the whole, and it's not in a priority funding area, and so it's all impervious surface, so why would you not want that to be part of the exemption? To me, the less important point is whether you're in or outside a priority funding area. The real point is, you're already...
I guess, I understand that. I guess my question was, do we want to allow impervious surface to continue in non-priority areas? I mean, if we're trying to concentrate new development, shouldn't this be, you know, something we're encouraging to be redeveloped in a different way? I'll withdraw my question.
Counselwoman Hare, and then we'll come back to Counselwoman Pickard, and then...
I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take a stab maybe at answering. I think this amendment is supposed to encourage the redevelopment, so not new development, but if you already have existing impervious surface. I think without an incentive like this, in all likelihood, you may just have that impervious surface sit there and do nothing for quite a number of years. This gives that incentive to sort of revitalize that area, and we want to revitalize and redevelop. We want those areas to get developed before any other areas in the county would get developed. We want people to look at those already impervious surface areas first. And so whether that's in a priority funding area or outside a priority funding area, we want to make sure those are sort of the hot commodities in the county. At least, that's the way I see this.
Counselwoman Pickard?
Yeah, I would agree. And when we, whether that already developed but dilapidated shopping center is in or outside, inside the priority funding area or outside the priority funding area, when we redevelop, those projects are now subject to things like stormwater management, and they actually can become a better project, better use of our land, rather than watching it just continue to deteriorate. Because we're not turning, whether your shopping center is, obviously, my entire district is in the priority funding area. So I'm looking forward to seeing some redevelopment. But I don't want to just say we are encouraging redevelopment only in the north part of the county, because there, I'm sure that there are shopping centers and other impervious surfaces that need to be redeveloped elsewhere in the county.
I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning whether or not those sites with impervious surfaces should be redeveloped without having to meet the requirements of the Forest Conservation Act, meaning some sort of, well, obviously, if they're impervious surface, there's no, there's no trees to, I guess there's no trees to mitigate for. I will let it go.
Before Ms. Fiedler goes, Mr. Johnson's shaking his head, so I wanted to...
Thank you very much, Chairman. Just for the record, I think that a lot of this discussion sounded like council members were looking at this amendment in isolation, but in the bill, we actually pulled in two exemptions to encourage redevelopment. It was not only where there's impervious surface within priority funding areas, but it was also if you are not clearing 20,000 square feet of trees. So in a lot of the examples I heard up here, there may be cases that you all just mentioned, where you're not clearing a half an acre anyway, you're just revitalizing the parking lot, and that is already in the existing bill, so you might have your cake and eat it too.
If I can clarify one point, Mr. Chairman, the exemption is actually a waiver, so it is provided in state code. It's provided, it's in 51603, which is the section of the code that applies to local forest conservation programs. But it provides, you can waive the requirements of this title for previously developed areas covered by impervious surface and located in a priority funding area. So the waiver that state law provides is, I think, what's in, which is what was in 6819 versus what the amendment is, which is taking it out of the priority funding area.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 17.
Ms. Rodgian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number 17 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read, I'm sorry, we have a withdrawal on Amendment Number 18.
Okay.
Okay. We are moving out at 19, okay? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 19.
Amendment Number 19, this amendment increases the fee for clearing in violation of forest conservation law from $3 per square foot to $6 per square foot.
Bless you to whoever that was.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Rodgian?
I guess my motivation for this particular amendment was just the, really, the heinous act of clearing in violation. If you're clearing in violation of the forest conservation law, that means you're cutting down old-growth trees. That's something we should have a very high penalty for, to act as a very strong deterrent. This was based on the original fee in lieu, which would have been $2.50, and really, $3 is not a huge leap from $2.50. So I questioned how much of a deterrent that would act, or how much of a deterrent that would provide. So I am proposing a $6, I don't, wouldn't even call it a fee, I'd call it a penalty for clearing in violation of the law.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, we wouldn't oppose this if we want to, if the council wants to set a more clear deterrent for violating the FCA, we would support that.
Counselwoman Fiedler?
I just want to remind everyone, we just passed an amendment that increased this particular fee by 275%.
Counselwoman Hare? To the sponsor, and I know we talked about this, and also the auditor, this gets into also, again, the economics and to figure out why to choose that number. Is there an explanation? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, this is based on the administration's valuation of what an acre, or I guess, actually, we're talking square feet here, but what the value of, the economic value that a square foot of forested land provides. And so their estimation was $2.50. This was to be significantly higher than that. So it wasn't just, you know, $2.50, extra 50 cents per square foot. This is saying, no, we're really serious. Don't cut in violation of the act. So I felt doubling it was an appropriate way to send that message, that this is completely unacceptable.
Counselwoman Hare, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we know how often this happens, that we cite someone for violating, for clearing in violation?
That would be a question for IMP. That's where the violation and the inspections for that would occur, I believe.
Well, I can say from, we enforce those violations, but we do get a fair amount of them. I can get you a number, but we probably do about 250 to 300 or so enforcement cases a year. Not all of them are clearing in the critical area, but there is always a percentage of those that are. So I can get you those numbers.
I'd be curious. Thanks.
Counselwoman Lacy, and then we'll come back to Counselwoman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I like about this amendment and the idea behind it is, I think there should be a pretty wide gap between what is really a penalty provision and the other fees that are set with the idea of incentivizing mitigation banking. I think the structure that the administration proposed in the bill overall says that, you know, cutting down trees should be the last thing that we do, if possible, and if people will not take the law seriously, both inside and outside the critical area, because trees are important across the county. And, for example, in my district, I don't think we have any critical area, or if we do, it's a tiny amount, so, but we need the trees too. And so I'm happy to support this bill. I don't think a percentage, a percentage increase isn't really persuasive versus saying, is there a significant difference in the two, in the overall categories of the fees that we're talking about?
Counselwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Swain, because I know you have experience with this, when somebody gets fined, what's sort of the process that happens on that? When you find out there's a violation? How's that go? And then how does somebody actually get hit with the fine?
Well, there's usually a notice of violation letter, and it depends whether it's going to be charged as a citation, which is like a traffic ticket, or whether we would proceed with an injunction. Ultimately, when the case comes to our office, the amount of the fines, if it goes to court, is going to be set by the judge. And what we find often with the courts is they suspend fines pending compliance. And in critical area clearing cases, it could be suspending fines based on them doing mitigation.
How would you know what happened with a particular citation? Like, how would you find out what the ultimate resolution of it was?
Well, if, well, we would know, because we are the ones taking it to court.
All right. So I have a particular one I'd like to get information on for this, so that we can know, you know, about these situations and find out kind of what's going on. I'll give you the case number, if you want to jot it down, and then if I can get some information. It's E2010-7112, and it pertains to a civil citation for logging without a permit on the Dodden Land Trust at 420 Dodden Road in Davidsonville, Maryland. So I'd be interested in finding out what the resolution of that was for logging without a permit, as well as for what looks to be maybe a floodplain violation as well, for dumping, I think, into the floodplain.
We will take a look and provide you with that information.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment 19.
Ms. Rodgian?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Just really quickly, I actually agree with Counselwoman Lacy that there should be some sort of difference between, you know, clearing legally and you're paying a fee in lieu and a penalty. I would like to have more information about sort of how often we see this information[1652.83] and how, what these citations are before a vote on this. So for the moment, I'm a nay, but I'd be happy to reconsider this at a later date.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative, Amendment Number 19 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 20.
Amendment Number 20, this amendment increases the fee for abandoning a forest conservation easement from $3 per square foot to $5 per square foot.
Motion to adopt?
Actually, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw, because we split up the, the sort of, we split up the abandonment of conservation easements into two different categories. This one really needs to be reworked, so I will withdraw this motion for now.
So since you're the sponsor and there's no second, we're just going to withdraw Amendment Number 20 for the record?
Yep.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 21.
Amendment Number 21, this amendment increases the reforestation ratio from 1/4 acre to 1 acre for clearing below the threshold.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Rodvian.
I basically am submitting this amendment because I have heard many, many constituents from my district and across the whole county who really want this bill to be a no net loss, and this takes a huge step to make it a no net loss. And so that's why I'm putting forth this amendment, to make the bill stronger and in the place that I believe the residents of this county actually want it.
Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this would, this would pretty dramatically change the bill. If the council wants to go in this direction, we would support that. We would probably need to work with you to then tweak some other parts of the bill, because this is a different approach than what we introduced. But the council supports the concept, or the administration supports the concept of strengthening the bill.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the sponsor, I actually stated to her, I would be all for no net loss if the transportation funding was provided by the county to have bus services to and from town centers. Mr. Kaisiego and I spoke about this. In addition, that affordable housing, instead of on a waitlist for 10 years, actually gets built. And then the third thing, density in areas near transit. These are things that are being said, but I don't have any commitment to. So that's the comment I made to Ms. Rodvian, is that if we got to that point where there was no net loss, and we had those things in fact, then you haven't worry about the opposite unintended consequences. So I just want to be clear for the record that I stated to you, and I'm going to state that to the public. So, any further discussion on this? Okay. Please call the roll on Amendment Number 21.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative, Amendment Number 21 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 22.
Amendment Number 22, this amendment repeals the credit allowed for reforestation.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Rodvian.
So this one came after spending a lot of time trying to figure out exactly how to calculate what amount of mitigation was required based on the reforestation credits and how they were to be calculated. And honestly, I've heard people that are experts at this have difficulty making this calculation. And so I very, I'm very concerned about a piece of our statute that would be difficult for even people very knowledgeable in this field to calculate, and so this would remove it altogether, to say, we're not going to make those calculations in terms of credits. We're simply going to, we're going to make the calculation based on the amount that is cleared.
Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same general testimony as the last one. This would, this would, is a different approach than what the administration submitted, but if the council wants to take this approach, we would certainly work with you to make sure that works within the bill. We support the concept.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 22.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative, Amendment Number 22 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 23.
Amendment Number 23, this amendment increases the reforestation ratio from 1/4 acre to 1 acre for clearing above the threshold.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Rodvian.
So again, this is another amendment that would take this bill closer to a no net loss, requiring, instead of just requiring you clear 1 acre, the current proposal, if you clear 1 acre, we require only 1/4 of an acre to be replanted. This would say, if you clear 1 acre, you must replant 1 acre. And I, again, this is what I have heard from the community, this is what I've heard from my constituents, this is what I've heard from across the county, and so I believe this is the approach that we should be taking.
Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in light of the other two amendments failing, I'm not sure that this amendment would make sense in isolation, because it does raise, it so drastically raises the reforestation ratio, but the other facets weren't increased commensurately, so I'm not sure that this would work. But again, we appreciate the intent of the sponsor. We do want to strengthen the bill, but I'm not sure this is the right way to do it at this point.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 23.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative, Amendment Number 23 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 24.
Amendment Number 24, this amendment increases the reforestation ratio from 1/4 acre to 1 acre for clearing above the threshold.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Rodvian.
So similar concept here, except now we're talking about clearing above the threshold, changing it from 1/4 acre for every acre cleared to 1 acre replanted for every acre cleared. Same concept to, intent to bring this to a no net loss concept.
Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, since the other provisions failed, this one would kind of stick out a bit and not make sense comprehensively in the bill at this point.
All right. Any further discussion, Ms. Pickard, or is just your mic on?
Oh.
That's okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 24.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative, Amendment Number 24 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 25.
Amendment Number 25, this amendment incorporates the language of Section 5, 1602B4 of the Natural Resources Article of the State Code.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hare, this is yours.
We're almost there, guys. We're almost to the next bill. No, okay, so we heard some public testimony on farming in the county, and actually, sort of well-timed the work session this month. We had a presentation that included statistics on the farming community, and we've heard that sort of acres of farming, even though the number of farms has increased in the last handful of years, the acreage of farms has decreased. Farming is a huge piece of District 7, but it's critically important to the county as a whole, and we heard from the Farm Bureau and other members that there's concern about the ability to farm land and the potential impacts that this bill and forest conservation in general might have for farming-related structures, et cetera. This amendment actually just straight-up tracks the state law for it, so it's just matching that. I know we've had conversations in general along these lines before, but I think the farming community would very much appreciate a yes vote on this.
Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're okay with this.
Okay. I see some lights on. Did anybody want to discuss it?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that everybody's getting their say. All right. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please read or call the roll on Amendment Number 25.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 25 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, fellow council members, I do not have any other amendments. Is there anything else that has been brought on this? Okay, thank you. Bill Number 6819 is amended, will be heard at the next meeting, Monday, November 4, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Moving along with the agenda. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7019.
Bill Number 7019, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Disability Leave.
Okay. While the administration's come up, the public hearing is closed. This is a vote-only. I don't know if the administration would like to add anything beyond what's already been stated.
For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Ms. Dickerson, Ms. Harold, and Ms. Klausmeyer. Nothing further to add from the bill hearing last council meeting, as just a quick reminder, due to the new state provisions in the Maryland Healthy Working Families Act, the paid sick leave bill, the county must expand certain definitions and modify permissible uses of disability leave. We do have an amendment which should be in front of you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7019. Well, you already did that, so we're good.
Yes.
It's a little bit different when the public hearings close, and plus, it's 11:06, and I don't know where I am right now, so. All right. We do have one amendment, Amendment Number 1. Can you read that into the record, Madam Secretary?
Yes, sir. Amendment Number 1, this amendment makes accrued disability leave available to all classified employees who regularly work at least 12 hours per week, and provides the disability leave for classified employees who regularly work at least 12 hours per week, but less than 50% of a normal work week will be administered to comport with state law.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Administration.
We ask you to move this amendment.
Okay. Madam Auditor.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that currently, our part-time 50% or more gets more leave. This allows for those that work between 12 and 20 to accrue it at the state law, which is 1 hour for every 30 hours worked. I did, what I'd like to, I know there's also going to be a new, a policy that you provided, but I wanted to also just kind of have the administration say how they're going to handle, whether they're going to then allow that, the 12-hour and exempt employees to carry over leave, or if this is going to be leave that's going to be given at the beginning of the year and then drop off, if that makes sense.
We're going to comply with state law.
They give those two options.
Yeah, I think we are talking about rolling it over.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Bill Number 7019, as amended, will be heard at the next meeting, November 4, sorry, 2019, 7:00 p.m. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7219.
Bill Number 7219, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget First Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriation.
Administration.
Good evening. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table from budget is Mr. Terro and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. I sent Chief Altima home. The Bill 7219 transfers $55,000 from the CAO contingency fund to the Police Department for the purchase of a THC analyzer. This came, this need came from the passage of a state bill, HB 1123, the agriculture hemp research and production, which was not anticipated during the building of the FY20 budget. Due to this law change, a certain piece of equipment needs to be, is necessary to prosecute cases involving marijuana. The bill also recognizes seven grants that were not anticipated in the FY20 budget, six in the Health Department, one in detention. I believe they're articulated in Madam Auditor's blue note. We're happy to go through them, but in the interest of time, there is no county requirement for these grants. So we're recognizing money coming in.
Okay. Any further discussion initial? All right, well, let's open the public hearing up for 7219.
No signups.
I do not, I'm sorry?
No signups.
Okay. I just, yeah, I didn't have that. But there's anybody to come forward to speak on 7219? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 7219 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7219.
Bill Number 7219, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget First Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriation.
Okay, it looks like we have a question, Councilwoman Rodvian.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was ready to vote.
That's okay. Any, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 7219.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 7219 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7319.
Bill Number 7319, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift.
Okay. This is also the administration.
Good evening again. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Michelson from DPW, and, oh, Mr. Phipps as well, and Ms. Sneeter from Office of Law. Bill 7319 recognizes the gift of a floodplain parcel to the county. It allows for additional protection of environmentally sensitive property bordering the Little Patuxent River contiguous with other county-owned and protected parcels. In addition, the parcel provides a more expansive buffer for the county's Patuxent water reclamation facility. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Seeing no initial questions, let's open it up for public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up. Anyone like to come forward for 7319, please do so. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 7319 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7319.
Bill Number 7319, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7319.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 7319 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7419.
Bill Number 7419, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Public Schools.
Okay. Administration.
Good evening again. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Shaknovich from the Public School System, I believe, Mr. Kai Ziegler, and Mr. from OPZ, and Mr. Swain from Office of Law. And Ms. Tompkins joined us as well, sorry. Lots of people. So this bill removes a sunset that was established in Bills 9217 and 1518 that set a sunset for the school chart at January 1st, 2020, or the passage of the General Development Plan. This bill maintains the sunset of the General Development Plan but removes the date certain of January 1st, 2020. We discussed this bill at length at the work session. Again, in the interest of time, I will try to keep this short. We have an adequate public facilities work group that is looking at all of these issues. They are very complicated and very complex, and we are taking our time to get it right. This bill, by removing this sunset, will maintain the status quo of schools being closed for middle and elementary schools at 95% or 100% for a high school. So with that, we ask you to move the bill, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Seeing no initial questions, I also, a co-sponsor on this bill, the prior council did vote to implement this, and we're just continuing that. But I also told the administration for the record that I have some APF recommendations between 95 and 100 where it allows the developer to pay to solve the problem. We haven't gotten to that yet, but just to be clear, this is a 95% for now, but there needs to be additional things added later on, and I'm hoping to have those done by January because we need to have them before the GDP. So we have that. Any further discussion? Let's open it up for public hearing. I do have one person signed up. If you guys could step off to the side for a second. Ms. Angelica Bailey, if you'd come forward, please.
Hang on, yes, she's here, okay.
I'm here, still here. Okay, I'll be very quick.
Name, address, two minutes, go ahead.
Angelica Bailey, Maryland Building Industry Association, located in Fulton, Maryland, here testifying against 7419. This would extend a building moratorium in Anarondale County without a definite end date, which would be damaging to the building industry and bad for the county as a whole. Growth is vital to the health of the county, but we want to do it smart. That's why we have FO. It was designed to make sure that growth is happening in areas that can balance and increase demand on public infrastructure with the county's goals for the general plan. And extending the moratorium is problematic for a lot of reasons. One is the, is funding for the county. We've seen in Howard County that FO moratoriums have significant implications on a county's bottom line. New development helps pay for a lot of public facilities, including new school construction, and generates new revenue for the county. An extended loss of revenue would have a big impact on services that Anarondale County prides itself on providing. And on top of that, the General Development Plan has been pushed back, and the revision process will be drastically different. There's no guarantee when the GDP will actually be adopted, so this bill effectively extends the moratorium with no actual end date. The two bills at the heart of this issue were designed to sunset in 2020 or with the adoption of the GDP. This was a reasonable, balanced approach that balanced the county's needs for new development with concerns over school capacity. And with respect to the sponsors, basing the expiration of those bills and the building moratorium on a moving target is unfair and anti-business, and we ask that you vote no.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bailey, question for you. If we were to extend the, the date from 2020 or the GDP to 2021 or the GDP, would that change your opposition to the overall bill? Now it gives an end date in sight for the building industry.
I would, off the top of my head, I would suggest that 2021 as the sunset date is, it's still too long. The January 2020 date, you know, came from a bill from 2017, a bill from 2018. It was expected to be a sufficient amount of time to address these issues. I would suggest that 2021 is, is still unreasonable, that these issues should be able to be cleared up by then. But something more definite than just an open-ended GDP that we don't know when it's actually going to be adopted is helpful. So it's something that we'd be happy to discuss, but initially, I would suggest no.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Seeing that that was left on the list, Ms. Johnson, is there anyone else that wants to come forward to speak on 7419? Please do so at this time. Last call. Ms. Johnson, name and address in two minutes. Thank you.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I really don't understand the logic where you say that if a high school is at 100% capacity, we're still going to allow additional development. And likewise, if you're at 95% in elementary schools, you know, you're dealing with, with people who have growing families. We are dealing, you know, with an extremely mobile society. You know, there's really rapid growth in certain communities and certain locations that are not really easily predicted. And therefore, I think these standards are fair and reasonable and need to be preserved, you know, in order to be able to provide staffing, space in the schools, reasonable accommodations. I mean, after all, you know, it is, you know, necessary accommodations for the population that's present. So I do hope that you preserve, you know, these kinds of standards. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 7419 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7419.
Bill number 7419, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public facilities, public schools.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment provides that the termination dates of Bills, Bill numbers 9217 and 1518 will be the earlier of January 1, 2021, or the final adoption of an ordinance that updates the General Development Plan.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, I think that this tries to continue this balance that we've heard about between respect for property rights, but also the acknowledgement that you can't just keep building and not adding capacity to things. I do think that there does need to be a date certain that the development community and that any landowner can look at. You know, if you're a private citizen and you own land and you want to potentially build on it, you need to know a date certain at which this moratorium is going to end. And so based on what we're hearing from the Office of Planning and Zoning, it sounds like probably next September, we should be looking at the GDP, which then realistically puts us hopefully by December passing the GDP. This would be the outside date with the goal that the GDP would be passed prior to this new sunsetting provision. And I think hopefully that's still a realistic timeline, given that Mr. Kai Ziegler is, he's come in and that's, I think, his timeline on, as head of Planning and Zoning, so.
Correct.
I don't want to misspeak for you.
Nope, that's very correct.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I think that this keeps a reasonable approach, and I'd ask my colleagues to support it.
Administration, Mr. Barron, the rest of the group?
Appreciate what Councilman Volkey is attempting here. I think you heard from the building industry rep that, that they didn't like this date. I will say there is, it is our goal to get the GDP done by January 1st, 2021. However, at a certain point, it does become out of the administration's hands, and it is in your hands. So I think we are comfortable with the bill as we drafted it. I don't think this is necessary. I think everybody knows that the GDP is coming and when it will be here. But if we end up at January 15th, I don't, I don't know if we would like to come back and revisit this. I think this bill maintains the status quo. As Mr. Chairman referenced, we do have an adequate public facilities work group that you sit on, and it is our intention, and we discussed it at the first meeting, to actually try to come down with something, to give the community something more certain before then. So I, I think if you pass this, it wouldn't be the end of the world, but I think we prefer it as drafted.
Any further?
I would just add, Mr. Barron, I appreciate everything you're saying. I get it. The only thing I would say is originally, the GDP was supposed to be here early next year. That's been pushed back. It was then summer. It's now being pushed back to fall. I have no reason to think that Mr. Kai Ziegler will not kind of drive that process forward in the timeline that he suggested, but I also think that leaving it open-ended to say whenever the GDP comes down, given the delays we've already seen, it's not unreasonable to think that it may not come down.
Well, we do have state pressure to.
I get that.
And are responsible.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye. I'm sorry. I can't see my voice.
Ms. Herr?
Based on Mr. Kai Ziegler's statement that we will have the GDP before the end of next year, I will vote aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number one is defeated.
Okay, seeing that that amendment did not pass, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Bill number 7419?
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Herr?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 7419 is passed.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Moving along, since these bills are connected, we'll be holding a joint public hearing for Bill 7519 and Bill 7619. We'll read through and go through that process, but we'll talk about that in a second. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bills number 7519 and Bill number 7619.
Bill number 7519, an ordinance concerning purchasing zoning small cell systems leases. Bill number 7619, an ordinance concerning public works, county rights of way zoning small cell systems.
Okay, this is the administration's bill, so I guess if you want to start with 7519 first and then talk about 7619, then we'll open it up for discussion, then we'll have the public hearing on both.
Happy to. Good evening again. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Harris from Central Services, Ms. Lori Rhodes from OPZ, Mr. Gary Houston from OIT, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from Law. Before I jump into the specifics of each bill, I want to sort of level-set what these devices are that we will be talking about. I know we have talked at work sessions about this. The administration pulled together a work group that not only solicited some public feedback, but some feedback from industry as well as all of our agencies, who, the, we were also fortunate that we had Councilman Volkey and Councilwoman Rodvian join us on that work group as we worked through this pretty complicated and technical issue. So it's been a night of big bills, and this is another one. This is an important bill. These devices are starting to show up across the country. What they are are sort of the next generation of cell technology. Folks at the table will be able to explain this a lot better than I can, but they're going to make our phones fast. So I'm sure they'll do more, but we, we are, Anarondale County, we are not the federal government. There are certain rules that we can put on these devices. There are certain things we can't. The FCC came down with an order, and I want to get the, the date right. It's September 16th, I believe, 2018, that set a number of certain rules that the local jurisdictions can and cannot do. So you're going to hear, I'm sure, from folks who have concerns about these devices. A question was asked during, during the period while you sat as the Board of Health regarding the impact of these things on human health. While we, we, the way we look at the federal rules, we cannot regulate on the basis of health. What we can do is set certain requirements in terms of what the licensing, the placement, the aesthetics of these things, and the notice to the community that has them. The, the bottom line is the, the federal order significantly diminished our local decision-making. It does not eliminate it, but it significantly diminishes it. Anarondale County cannot say no to small cell antennas within specific neighborhoods or other areas of our communities. So to be clear, if we did not pass this bill, the industry could, under the FCC rules, come in and force us to allow them. They could essentially take us to court and require us to put them up. We would then lose our ability to do some of the things that we talked about, especially in 7619, and I'll get to that in a second. We can charge more than the recommended safe harbor fees or the permitted safe harbor fees under the FCC rules, but we have to be able to justify them. The order also decreases our ability, capacity to receive certain fees and use our rightaways. It's, we are, and I do want to say this, Anarondale County is part of a coalition of jurisdictions nationwide that is challenging the order on a number of fronts. That case is now making its way through the federal courts, and I'm sure Ms. Blair Klausmeyer could speak more to it, or Mr. Houston, who have been sort of following that on the day-to-day. There's a number of different components to this. A number of different jurisdictions are sort of taking the lead on different portions of challenging the FCC's rules. But that case is going to take a long time. And if the courts come down with different rules, we could revisit this issue. If the FCC decides to change the rules, we could revisit the issues. But right now, there are, there are, there are a number of telecommunications firms that are, are trying to place these devices now, and we have very little time to act before they could challenge us for failure to permit them under current FCC rules. So with that, I want to move just very briefly into what the two bills do. And in the interest of time, rather than having me stumble all over it, I'm going to ask Ms. Blair Klausmeyer to give a quick overview of what the two bills in front of you do.
Sure. Sure. Bill 7519 is dealing primarily with leases of county property. The county has to bring certain leases to the county council for approval. An exception to that is leases for small cell systems that, for which the standard, the standard rate set under resolution is charged. The standard rate right now is in excess of $56,000. So what we're trying to do here is make sure that small cell are not, small cell systems are not within our general definition of commercial telecommunications facilities for which we have to charge $56,000. And so we are providing a separate definition for commercial telecommunications facilities that does not include small cell systems. And then also excluding leases for small cell systems from things that have to come before you, because I don't think you want every one of these to have to come before you. We do have a standard license agreement that we are working on. I have provided a draft to the county auditor, and once we have that finalized, we'd be happy to share it with you. Bill 7619 is the bill that actually deals with placement of these small cell systems in the county rights of way, as well as the zoning for placement of small cell systems on private property. The, there are standards, engineering standards and aesthetic standards that have been developed by the Department of Public Works in conjunction with the Office of Planning and Zoning. And these are referenced both in Article 13 for the use in the right-of-way, as well as Article 18 for the zoning, planning and zoning.
If I can just add, the, there have been a couple of bills at the state level addressing this. What Ms. Blair Klausmeyer and our work group did was take the Maryland Association of Counties' version of the bill, which we believe gives the most control to local jurisdictions permitted under federal rules, and sort of brought that in under county code. So we are attempting to give as much control to local communities as we are allowed to under the federal rules.
And we do anticipate state legislation, again, during this session, so it is important to kind of get ahead of that with getting our own local legislation.
A number of jurisdictions have bills moving through their process right now, as I'm sure you're aware.
Thank you. Before we open it up for questions, I'm just going to do another time check, because we have several people that haven't testified, and we still have other bills, but we'll proceed. We'll start with Councilwoman Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it quick. It's my understanding that there is a court case currently challenging that FCC standard. Is that correct? Are we tracking that?
Yes, we are. We're actually part of a coalition that is part, we are a part of a coalition that has filed an action and that has been consolidated in the Ninth Circuit.
Okay, so to the extent that these bills pass tonight, can I just ask that you all bring us back whatever information comes out of that at whatever time it's decided? Thank you.
Councilman Fiedler?
So Bill 76, basically, we, we are addressing the aesthetics, all of that. If we were not to pass 76, the industry could come in and put small refrigerators on lightposts in residential communities.
That's correct.
Okay. If we were to introduce, or someone on the council were to introduce a, an amendment to limit based on health concerns, and this council were to pass something like that, what then would be the recourse for the FCC if we've now gone against what they've deemed in the courts?
Yeah, the FCC would file an action against the county for violating its, and let me back up a second. That whole notion of RF emissions and the ability to control RF emissions at the local level is not unique and new to this FCC order. That has to do, that goes back to the telecommunications law that deals with the macro towers as well. So that's nothing new and exciting. That's, that's been around for a long time. And so, but they're, they would bring an action to and join us from, if they didn't, the, the carriers would. So there would be, there's kind of two fronts that that could be, we could be attacked on that card.
Okay. And then pending the outcome of the cases that are in the courts right now, we could potentially come back and address this again based on those outcomes?
Yes, yes. We get, Mr. Houston really gets them, but we get pretty frequent updates from our telecommunications council that is the council for the coalition. I think we're up to number 37 or 38 or 39. We get them fairly frequently on what exactly is going on with links to the various pleadings. So we're, we keep on top of it, and we can certainly do that.
Okay, so these two bills join together, because I know there's a lot of frustration in the community. I hear it from my constituents, and I get it, but really, our hands are tied at this point. And we are preparing, while pending those outcomes in the courts.
Yes.
For the technology to come here. This is the way we want it to look. Right. Based on what we're able to do.
And right now, there's nothing preventing the carriers from pushing forward, and they, they're holding their applications in abeyance, pending us, that they've talked to us about our requirements, that sort of thing. They've looked at them. So they are cooperating with us so that we have, you know, they make sure we have our ducks in a row before they, that we do have some that are in the county already that came in kind of before I think anybody even knew what a small cell was. But the other, we have had no further applications to process. They're just being patient and waiting for us to get this in order.
Thank you.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The FCC, they preempted placement, construction, modification of the cell towers. Did they actually say anything about the operation of the cell towers and whether we could regulate that?
Operation, you mean, I'm sorry?
Like how they operate? Like, like what they're allowed to put out in terms of the radio frequencies that they're allowed to emit?
Yes, they have standards on radio frequency emissions.
So the, so you're saying that they've preempted that, too?
They've preempted that.
Okay. And then in terms of radio frequency radiation, there are public laws that already protect against people being harmed by that, aren't there?
As far as I'm aware. I mean, I know that the standards come from a number of commissions, including like nuclear regulatory, I mean, that, that.
Sure, yeah.
Those standards are not just FCC. They've consulted with private and pub, other private and public groups to come up with those standards.
I guess there's a 1968 Act, Public Health Service Act, that protects the public from radiation from electronic products. And so I'm trying to juxtapose the two things, to say, we have to put these in, but yet we also need to protect people from these RF emissions, and it seems like they might be in conflict. And what it sounds like you're saying is there's nothing we can do about that.
There's nothing we can do.
And I don't, I'm confused about that.
Yeah, I mean, we are, what the courts have held is that what the law says is, you can't, you cannot regulate on basis of environmental. These RF emissions are environmental, so therefore.
They're not health.
You cannot, they're, they're not a separate category from environmental. That health is part of environmental, is what the courts have said.
All right. I'm going to switch gears for a second and ask about the contract with the vendor who's doing the. doing the inspections. Do we have a copy of that contract yet?
I don't have the actual contract with me here, but we can get that.
Okay. Yeah, because I just want to find out what they're actually charging us in the contract. One of the things that I've heard is that our fees are a bit out of line, and I actually went and pulled the Prince George's County legislation to take a look at what they were charging in terms of fees for these small cell applications. And they are actually at, for a new pole, they're at $3,000. I think we're at $4,000 for that. And then for an application to mount one on an existing replacement pole, they're at $1,800, and I think we're a little more than that. The same is true for some of the other ones, existing structures, and then minor modifications. Their minor modification is $800, ours is at $1,475. So we're quite a bit different, and I guess what I'm trying to understand is why Prince George's County, doing the exact same work, would be a different number than us.
You'd have to look at the exact work going on.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I don't know what their, their standards are, what they're going, but what we looked at is, what is it going to take within the county to hit the shot clocks with what we anticipate the volume's going to be over the next six months, once everything is signed, sealed, and delivered?
Okay.
So their regulations-
I'm going to ask Mr. Phipps also to weigh in a little bit.
Yeah, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. One of the other things is that this is all new to us. So it's going to come down to, yes, they have scheduled prices in their contract, but the question's going to be, how many hours per review application will it take? And maybe there's difference of opinion of what we think it's going to take, what Prince George's thinks it's going to take. The other thing is Prince George's charges an extra $250 per resubmital-
I see that.
-where ours was kind of a lump sum, all baked in. So, and I think there's going to be every interest on, on part of the vendors, just like the earlier discussion, submit a perfect package that's not going to be refused with resubmittals, so.
So then, let me ask this to whoever, and anybody can chime in. I've got an amendment that I'm going to offer at the appropriate time, and I'm just curious, is there any opposition to revisiting these fees after we've had a chance to see how this works in practice?
So I, I've seen a couple of draft amendments. I think it's the one that you're referring to. The administration has no problem justifying our fees. Frankly, if, if we don't, I believe the carriers will probably make us. So, yeah, we don't, in concept, we don't have any issue with having to justify our fees.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we're going to go forward with the public hearing, but I don't see us getting through the rest of the bills this evening. We'll see if we can get through this one. So I want to close the public, or close this session, move on to public hearing. Follow the people who come forward as quickly as possible. Jeff Ott, Carolyn Smith, Jennifer Littonen, Peggy Williams, Latara Harris, and Jolie Diane, as you're coming forward, name, address, two minutes. We're going to go as quickly as possible. And we'll start with Jeff Ott. Right when you get in the seat, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Ott. Address 10170 Junction Drive in Annapolis Junction, Maryland 20101. I'm a real estate manager with Verizon Wireless. Thank you, Chairman Pruski, and members of the council for your consideration and the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Verizon commends the county's efforts to develop a small cell permitting process and is eager to invest in building a robust small cell network in Anarundel County that will greatly enhance wireless services and meet the increasing demand for mobile data. Businesses, residents, visitors, commuters, and emergency services, and key economic development drivers such as smart communities, Internet of Things, telemedicine, intelligent transportation systems, immersive education, all rely on small cell technology to bring enhanced service and connectivity. As the county prepares to finalize a bill to regulate small cell deployments, it is imperative to adopt an efficient and cost-effective process that is consistent with federal law, will encourage investment in small cell technology for the benefit of its citizens, and will attract future businesses and investments. The FCC order adopted in September 2018 established a regulatory framework for small cell technologies within the public rights of way. Some key provisions of this, of the proposed bill are inconsistent with that order. I will highlight these concerns that were previously provided in a letter on October 11th, 2019. Number one, fees. The application and other fees required by the bill are too high, far exceeding the FCC safe harbor cost-based rates. Imposing high fees will significantly undermine the ability to invest in current solutions and to offer the next generation of wireless broadband services. Therefore, we urge the county to adopt cost-based rates that are in line with the FCC safe harbor rates for small cells located in the public rights of ways. Number two, permitting process. The proposed conditional use process detailed in Title 10 may not allow adherence to the applicable FCC shot clocks. We applaud Anarundel County for the history of forward-thinking leadership, particularly in the areas of innovation, technology, and connectivity. We encourage you to apply that thoughtful leadership now and ask that you would consider these recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn Smith?
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Smith from Severna Park. I'm a retired Anarundel County High School teacher. I knew nothing about the 5G small cell systems until my friend and neighbor Peggy Williams asked me to join her committee. I went with Peggy last spring to the meeting about the proposal to erect a cell tower near Shady Side Elementary School. My husband is a cancer survivor. In 2005, we learned he had prostate cancer, and just four years ago, he had one-third of his right lung removed due to cancer. We have a utility pole in the front corner of our home on Gettys Avenue. I spend a great deal of time gardening from spring through fall. I do not want to be exposed to this microwave radiation. I very strongly oppose Bills 7519 and 7619.
Thank you, ma'am. Jennifer Littonen?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Littonen. I live in Arnold, Maryland, and I'm an elementary school art teacher in Annapolis. I don't know much about 5G technology, but I want to go on record to say that I oppose the deployment of unsafe microwave-emitting equipment in our residential neighborhoods and near schools. I have a young son, and I want a safe space for him to sleep and play. Please oppose Bills 7519 and 7619, and hold off on this deployment until the technology is proven to be safe for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Peggy Williams?
Peggy Williams, Severna Park, environmental scientist. I oppose Bills 7519 and 7619. I do not consent to this technology because over 50,000 peer-reviewed published studies, including the 2018 $25 million, 10-year NTP study requested by the FDA, tells us that non-ionizing microwave radiation is damaging, it causes DNA damage and cancer, non-ionizing radiation. That previous statement was incorrect by Dr. K. I sent you a video of a device on Main Street at City Dock emitting microwave radiation levels in the extreme hazard range according to biologically-based RF microwave radiation exposure guidelines. Who is measuring this? No one. Not the FCC, certainly. Their website says the FCC does not have the resources or the personnel to routinely monitor the exposure levels at all of the thousands of transmitters that are subject to FCC jurisdiction. So where does that leave us? It leaves us with relying on telecom to police itself while breaking federal laws and making huge profits deploying in our rights of way, bringing harmful microwave radiation to our communities. No doubt, you'll hear telecom talk about their obsolete FCC exposure guidelines. Keep in mind, those guidelines do not take into account the pulsed, data-modulated, erratic, and chaotic nature of the microwave radiation, which is highly biologically damaging, nor do they take into account continuous 24/7 exposures. In closing, I urge you to please oppose these small cell bills and consider fiber optic connections for internet and telecommunications that safeguard our health, privacy, and security while reducing our exposure to harmful microwave radiation. Thank you.
Thank you. Latara Harris?
Latara Harris, Regional Director for External and Legislative Affairs for AT&amp;T out of Washington, DC. Chairman Pruski, Vice Chair Picard, and members of the council, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify tonight. I am joined also, if you have some more intense questions about the actual deployment and engineering of it, we do have our engineering lead here from AT&amp;T also that can answer those questions. But also, just kind of speaking on behalf of the industry, and really on behalf of AT&amp;T, we, you know, we want to work together to give Anarundel County residents, businesses, and visitors the most seamless wireless experience possible. We, on our network alone, our network capacity has increased, and the drive has increased by over 470,000 percent. It was something that no one could have ever imagined. I'm sure that you all have many devices at your fingertips, your children have devices at their fingertips, and we are really at a point in which the current infrastructure just does not support where we are going. So when you talk, you speak about, Mr. Ott, and the work that he was saying in terms of the smarter technologies and what's coming down the road, we needed to make a change, and we needed to make it quickly. And that's what this is about. So I know you've been here now all night. We do appreciate the council's work in drafting Bill Number 7619, specifically Mr. Barron and his work, and the entire team have been really working on this. We are generally supportive of the bill, with the exception of the proposed fees, which exceed the presumably reasonable fees in the FCC order. We ask that you reconsider the proposed fees and ensure that they are reasonable, cost-based, and consistent with the FCC order. In addition, which I believe is something that you, it looks like you might consider having to revisit the fees after a year. So, thank you again. There has been tons of research on this. I know that there's a lot of things on the internet, but there has been tons of research, National Cancer Society, World Health Organization, others that have done extensive research on this, that have even related this technology and the emission to that of a baby monitor and microwave, you know, things like that. So we can certainly get you that information, but I just wanted to, again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Jolie Diane? There's a chair on the other.
There's a chair on the other.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. Jolie Diane, my mom has lived in this county since 1992. Even if we wanted to follow the FCC guideline, we can't, because it's based on one single six-minute exposure, not constant 24/7 exposure every day, 365. So what we're talking about is the duration of exposure. If you're driving down the highway at 60 miles an hour, great, that's the rate, so six volts per meter. But how long are you going to absorb that radiation? And talking about the trees, they're all absorbing microwave radiation. And anything that's biological is, with water, is absorbing microwaves. It's not 5G, that's an advertising slogan. It's not 4G, that's advertising, it's microwaves. So when we're talking about the deployment of any antennas, what's coming out of it? The operations. Only the placement, modification, and construction were preempted by the Telecommunications Act, but not the operations, and that's what's coming out of the tower. It's a very sporadic kind of a signal, thousands of times a second, which our DNA can feel. Maryland, actually, in 2016, said they need to take Wi-Fi out of schools and reduce exposure for the kids, because it's not six volts per meter, which is exceedingly high. It's an extreme hazard. It's the duration of exposure. Did you know they took Wi-Fi out of schools in other countries, like Israel, like France, like Russia? They don't even let little kids have microwave radiation exposure with the cell phone. So we're way behind. We're not adding it up, we're not measuring any of the towers. Okay? So what I ask you to do is go do the research. There are over 50,000 studies showing the adverse effects of microwave radiation, including our own military studies, Navy and Army, 1965 and 1972.
Thank you, your two minutes are up.
I appreciate you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, thank you to this panel, appreciate you guys coming out. Moving along to the next two, Jessica Kane and Randy Williams. If you'd come forward, please.
No.
And normally, I don't do this, but Madam Secretary, I'm going to do it. Ms. Johnson, I see you're ready to move, why don't you come up? If there's anyone else, since we have a limited number of people in the crowd, I'm breaking my own rule, but-
Jessica's not here.
Okay.
So I came and stopped.
But is there anyone else that'd like to come forward? Because we can fill in the seats and move quicker. Ms. Randy Williams will start there and then move along. Thank you. Name, address, two minutes.
Randy Williams, Shady Side, Maryland. I oppose the Bills 7519 and 7619. Why don't we take some action, and why don't we do what's right for this county and for its residents? And why don't we go ahead and just make decisions based on health effects, rather than thinking about what is good for the telecom? We have attorneys, we can pay them, we can sue them, we can defend our residents. That's what they're doing in Bowie, that's what they're doing in Montgomery County. Why don't we just go ahead and let our attorneys do the job for us if we need them, if somebody sues us? That's my first statement. So establishing a distance from a home for a small cell, how about 1,500 feet? Then you may provide some safe zone for a pregnant woman, infant, or child. But other than that, I don't think we're going to be able to keep our homes safe. An exemption for these bills, do you realize that that exemption is for airspace, and they are saying that if they don't have to cause a problem with the ground or change the airspace, that you're going to give them an exemption? That's crazy, because right now, the telecom community has those strands up there where they could just take something off and re-hook an antenna to it. So you guys are going to be losing thousands of dollars anyways, because they're going to be cheating and putting up antennas, and then there is no notification that your family's going to be exposed to this hazardous radiation. So that's not fair either. So here's a press release for you. I hope it's not for tomorrow. Attention Anarundel County residents, you will be subjected without consent to exposure from hazardous emissions of microwave radiation levels that have not really been tested on humans to show if it's healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, next.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lisa Taylor-Serrero from Shady Side, Maryland. I oppose the bills as they stand right now. I think there needs to be further amendments made. I think when it comes to 5G, everyone can agree that, that we want to maintain as much control as we can in our county, and we don't want to, you know, get chump change for, for, you know, providing and giving, basically renting our land to, to a private company. So we want to keep some kind of control. So I think that's good, that we're trying to do that. I'm just, I'm concerned that it's giving them the green light to go ahead and start rolling this out, and I'm very concerned about that. I think that there needs to be amendments to include setbacks from schools and residences, especially, but even businesses with, like, the Pfizer study that came out, saying that this kind of exposure can cause more miscarriages. I mean, I think I'd be concerned about that as a pregnant, you know, person, having to go to work someplace and be exposed to that all the time. So not just in terms of that, but also because of lower property values and the aesthetics. I mean, I can send you independent studies about property values, they say, oh, it'll go up, you know, the telecom will tell you that, you know, it'll go up, because everybody wants fast service. Well, who's going to buy a house, right next to a cell phone tower and be like thrilled about that part? If you do it, you do it for a discount. An additional amendment that I'd ask that you consider, besides the setbacks, is at the very least requiring expanded insurance coverage to include not only property damage, but also to fully insure against any health or environmental impacts.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm glad the other people have prepared really good testimony. Mine's a little more slipshod, but I, and I apologize for that. But back in 2016, I'm the author of a book, whose name, I can't remember the name of the book. Her name is Deborah Davis, she's, she's an epidemiologist. She has created, or she's the leader of an organization called the Environmental Health Trust. And I spent about six months of that year reading and learning about these things that she was so rabid about, related to, you know, this radio frequency and the kinds of studies that have been done. And I am surprised, I'm really impressed favorably with our new director at the Health Department, but there is a lot of research that's been done. And the Environmental Health Trust, you know, has funded a lot of research, you know, and they cite the research that other folks have done. This radiation is potentially lethal. And with the military, the standard that they use for what you can be subjected to is, you know, like a 23-year-old militarily-trained big guy, like six feet something, and, you know, X hundred pounds, and it's not realistic for the rest of the population. You know, in other words, they got a big sample, a big body, and they're saying, oh, he can tolerate it, never mind put this- he can tolerate it, never mind put the smaller bodies, or the younger bodies would be vulnerable too, or the elderly, or the medically fragile. This stuff's dangerous. But you also, this is another one of those cases where you've got to start watching the federal government. The FCC pulled a fast one here, along with the telecommunications guys. They swear up and down, no, it's no problem. But, you know, they knew that the health problems were important, and they got it passed, that we can't protect ourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for your time. Okay, seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing, joint public hearing on 75 and 7519 and 7619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7519.
Bill Number 7519, An Ordnance Concerning Purchasing Zoning Small Cell Systems Leases.
Any further discussion on that 7519? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 7519.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven, the affirmative, none, and the negative, Bill Number 7519 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7619.
Bill Number 7619, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, County Rights of Way, Zoning Small Cell Systems.
Councilwoman Hare?
Oh, no, I'm just ready to vote.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion? Since we already read it in, there are amendments, so let's move to those. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment requires a developer of a small cell system to post a notice of the proposed system on the doors of all dwelling units in a multifamily dwelling with more than 10 units, and to file with the application for a building permit a list of addresses of the dwelling units provided with notice by posting on the doors of the units and a copy of the notice posted.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment is born out of the conversation that we had during our work session, where I asked if a landowner who has tenants, if there's any notification to the tenants, this would be the notification to the tenants, they're not the owner of the property, but they should be notified if they're living in close proximity to the location.
Administration?
Appreciate the intent of the amendment and agree that everybody should get notice. A little concerned about the method required. I know the county has a number of secure apartment buildings. I don't know logistically how you get in, if you are required to post the notice on doors, and how we verify that it was done. Again, appreciate the intent, but I just don't know if this amendment is workable. So I have some questions, and the first time, I believe, we saw it was this evening.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you. So, the reason it was crafted like this is that there is no easy way for the industry to obtain the contact information of the tenants, and there's also no requirement for the owners of the property to release it, so I understand that, this was the only way to do it. I understand the complexities. This was the best way to try to accomplish what I was trying to accomplish.
Can I ask just for a point of order? Is there any way for the administration, if this were to pass, to ask for some additional language, such as if it's a secure property, it's sent to the mailing or the management company for disposition, or, I don't even know the right word so late, but, yeah...
Yeah, I mean, I think we would have to get back and huddle, I'm a little uncomfortable trying to wordsmith on the fly.
No, I understand that.
But I do think the, like I said initially, that it's a really challenging goal you're trying to accomplish, because, I mean, I believe though, and again, I'm doing this on the fly, but the USPS does keep a list of valid addresses, so maybe there is a way to do by mail that wouldn't take away the issue around there. But we, if it were to pass, I think we would probably have to come back with some sort of corrective amendment.
We would have to have, Lori Rhodes, we would have to have provisions that could be enforced. I mean, something like this, we couldn't prove, so someone could say they weren't notified, which would hold up the applicant, because there's no proof that it was done, which is why we have the certified mailing, the postage, you know, envelope, those types of proof. That's the evidence that's needed when you're passing legislation like this.
Understood. I'd still like to...
Okay, Councilwoman Lacy, did you, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, for the sponsor's information, for everybody else's information, hosting not only has a problem with, can you get into, you know, a gated community or a closed apartment building or whatever, but it's expensive, it's actually very expensive. When you think about a fee to just go personally serve someone with a legal document, you're essentially going and having to do that on every door and have the server then attest that they've done that. I just, I just don't think it's practical versus being able to mail, you know, resident. And you can definitely get in their inbox that way, because every tenant still has some kind of access to the mailbox. But I appreciate the intent, I just agree it's not workable.
And again, I know we have two other people, we have two minutes, we're not gonna vote on this anyway tonight, but another suggestion for the sponsor, I'm sorry, I'm full of ideas at midnight. But, you know, we have Board of Appeals notices that go out, and they get emailed out, I don't know if there could be something attached to that, because that is public knowledge that goes to associations and other things, it's just a thought in terms of the process, because those are public notices to groups. Again, I don't know if that's the answer, I'm just trying to find a path forward with your intention to meet that, but we have other people. Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, I think that there is a way to make this workable, I think it's just a matter of if there's a will, there's a way. I think this is a good, I think it's a well-intentioned idea from Councilwoman Fiedler. I was just jotting down over here, post-notice on the proposed system of the door of each dwelling unit, comma, if accessible, or in a common area, in a multifamily dwelling, something like that, you know, to say...
I mean, common areas aren't always accessible. I mean, again, I think we all appreciate the intent here.
Well, I think we could write it broad enough that we could find a way. And the other thing I would say that Councilwoman Lacy raised, yes, it is expensive to have somebody go out there. I mean, it's usually like 50 bucks to get a process server to run out, if they have to make multiple attempts, it goes to like 125, 150. I mean, that's what going rate is in private process servers around here, I can tell you that from experience. So my point is, you might be able to get some economies of scale-saving, if they went out there and did like 100 units, they might charge you a better rate, you may not be paying that for each one that they're posting, so...
I think a stamp is, what, 50 cents?
Huh? Well, no, certified's more than that. So if you send it certified, it's usually...
It's midnight, it was a bad joke.
I was gonna say, particularly if it's return receipt, you might be closer to like 12 bucks a mailing, so...
Can I just ask a question, I might have to wordsmith this? Is this intended for the situation where the antenna's going on the roof of the multifamily dwelling? Because that's, I think, the question that you had at the work session. Correct. Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, in light of the discussion and the time, I don't think we can vote on this amendment.
So, I was just gonna make a point of order, it's now midnight, we cannot, no longer vote on any bills. We can vote on resolutions, though, if I'm not mistaken, so, I mean, we could continue the discussion, but nothing can be moved forward. So, if there's nothing else, just for the record, 7819, hold on, let me go back, what are we on?
76.
75, 7619, 7719, and 7819 will not be heard until the next council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We will continue with public hearings, we have to have the public hearings.
Okay.
We advertised as having public hearings, we will just hold the votes.
Okay. Well, let's do that, then. All right, so, we were on 76, so let's continue to move forward. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7719.
Bill Number 7719, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Automobile, Truck, and Recreational Vehicle Sales.
Okay, I guess, I don't know, the administration, you want to say anything?
This is not our bill.
Ms. Pickard? It's your bill, sorry.
Yes, thank you. As I said at the work session, this bill expands on the legislative fix to the code regarding auto sales, auto dealerships. A bill passed, the council that addressed this issue for car dealerships located on two acre parcels predominantly focused in the London Town Edgewater area in C3 that were operating via non-conforming use. I believe that previous legislation should have expanded its reach to car dealerships in other parts of the county in similar situations, particularly in my district, where you will find car dealership row in the stretch of commercial businesses between Crane Highway and Ritchie Highway. In this area, you have car dealerships that have been in existence before this county had a zoning code. They are now caught up in the inflexibility of non-conforming use rules and are unable to improve or modernize their properties within their current property boundaries. This bill will provide a fix to the code and bring such businesses into compliance. I'd be happy to answer any questions and would ask my colleagues to support this bill and vote yes next time.
Administration, anything, I mean...
Yeah, for the record, Pete Barron with the administration, Ms. Lori Rhodes from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Greg Swain, the administration has no opposition to this bill.
Okay, let's open the public hearing for 7719. Everybody like to come forward? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 7719 is now closed, and so is everything else. So moving forward, Bill 7819. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7819.
Bill 7819, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Roads, Traffic Control, Signal Monitoring Systems.
Yes, so I am the sponsor of this bill, and Councilwoman Lacy is the co-sponsor. We had a pretty good discussion at the work session about this for the benefit of the public. Currently, there is a moratorium on red light cameras in Anaronda County. That moratorium is five, but they're not used, because we don't have a contract, and that was prior, decided prior to a prior administration. Simply what this bill does is remove that moratorium and allows the administration to come through for the budget process, to decide essentially where, when, cost, who you're contracting with, the whole, I guess, say, 10 yards. So anyways, that's pretty much it. I don't know if Ms. Lacy, she's not there, so I can't have her say anything. But Admin, anything to add to that?
For the record, Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Beckier and Mr. Phipps from the Department of Public Works, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. The administration supports this bill. The previous rule of five seemed arbitrary. The county, as the chairman mentioned, does not have any currently. The contract was abruptly canceled October of last year. So we are starting to look at where we would place these. We do not have a plan at the moment. This is not the administration's bill, but we do support the flexibility. These devices, whether you love them or hate them, can save lives, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. So, we have authorization for up to five, we are operating zero currently, right?
Correct.
Okay. I lost my train of thought. Wow, okay, sorry.
Okay. See no further initial discussion, let's open the public hearing on 7819. Anybody coming forward? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on 7819 is now closed, and there's not much else we can do with that. So, moving along, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3619.
Resolution Number 3619, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Allow the County Auditor to Have Access to All Records and Files Pertaining to County Business, Including Records and Files That Contain Information Subject to Disclosure Protections Under the Law, To Require the County Auditor to Keep Protected Information Confidential, To Allow the County Auditor to Conduct Additional Financial and Performance Audits of Any Office, Department, or Agency Funded in Whole or in Part by County Funds, And To Allow the County Auditor to Conduct Investigations of an Act or Allegation of Fraud, Waste, or Abuse in the Obligation, Expenditure, Receipt, or Use of County Resources.
Mr. Volkey, anything to add to this, or...
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Man, I'm just forgetting everything right now. Okay, so a couple things. I want to start off by saying thank you to the administration, Madam Auditor, police, state's attorney's offices here, Ms. Daigle has stuck through, we are now at five hours and six minutes to get to this particular bill. And she had sent a letter earlier with some concerns, I think it was today, on this particular resolution. So, I just want to be clear about what this resolution's intended to do. It's intended to increase the authority of the auditor. However, there have been some concerns about particular exemptions that have been raised, I should call them exceptions, and whether they would actually too restrictively limit the ability of the auditor, where frankly, she would have less authority than she has today. So that's a concern. I do just want to note where these, this resolution came out of. There was a Resolution 5016, and there was another Resolution 2618. Both of those were before this council in the last four years. Both of those were actually approved four to three, they did not get the requisite fifth vote to go in front of the voters. But the terms that we're using in these bills are almost identical, and in most places are identical, to the language of those particular resolutions. So, I do just want to say, while I understand the administration's concern, and there are certain things that they want to keep out, particularly as it relates to active law enforcement, executive privilege, high-level deliberations, and attorney-client privileged information, Ms. Schuett helped too, by the way. I think we need to be able to get to a place where everybody can agree on this, because that's what we all want to do. So, with saying all that and kind of giving the background for the benefit of my colleagues, who I know haven't been quite in the trenches on this thing, in ways, some of the rest of us have been stuck there, we would, we've all sort of discussed the idea of holding this again for another month, to give a little more time to Madam Auditor and to the administration, to see if we can work out some of these differences. We haven't been able to come up with a brilliant solution to solve this problem yet. Mr. Swain's involved too, so thank you for your help. So with that, I would actually just ask that we hold this resolution again until the November 18th meeting, which gives us 30 days. That should hopefully be plenty of time. By that point, we're gonna know whether we're an up or down vote on this.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to hold the vote for Resolution 3619, is there a second?
Second. Wait, I'm trying to decide.
I don't even know if you can vote on a motion after this.
Yeah, we can vote on the resolution.
But not on a motion to...
But I don't know, I'm unsure of whether we can actually vote on a motion.
And the thing is, is I don't really see the need for the motion tonight, because we can't, well, we could vote on it.
We could vote on it, yeah. I suppose the only...
So it just goes to the next meeting, then, essentially? And then we have to hold it until, you know, technically? So...
You could vote on it next time.
Yeah.
Well, I know, you could vote on it tonight, vote on it next meeting, but I think the intention of the sponsor, the auditor, council, so I'm getting this clear...
That's correct.
Is to move to the 18th. So what will happen is, we're not doing anything with it tonight.
Okay.
We're not saying anything. And then what will happen is, we'll go on to the next meeting, and then we have to hold it till November 18th. Is everyone with me?
Fair.
If I could just add, I want to thank Mr. Volkey, Madam Auditor, our intrepid state's attorney for sticking it out all evening. The intention of everybody here is to strengthen the auditor's power, and we want to make sure we get this right. Just so everybody is clear, the earliest that this could go into effect is in the November 2020 election, because this will have to go before the voters. So, we have plenty of time to get this right. We've all had a long night. I want to thank everybody for all their work on this, and I'm confident we're gonna get there.
And I would just like to ask Ms. Schuett, okay, so, I'm wondering if a motion to hold the resolution would still be in order since it's about the resolution? I'm wondering if we should do the motion anyway. I would like to recommend that we do the motion anyway, as a stopgap, just so we have, just in case.
That's fine. You know, I'm not an attorney, but I play one on TV, so...
Yes, I am unsure.
Motion to hold the vote, November 18th, Councilwoman Volkey said, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, do you need to call the roll on that?
Yep.
All right, go ahead.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Yeah. Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Oh, it's Ms. Lacy, it hasn't... Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven, six, affirmative, none, and the negative. We are holding the vote on Resolution 3619 until November 8th, which we were going to do anyway.
And again, if somebody brings up a Roberts Rules issue, we will do the same thing at the next meeting.
Correct.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3919.
Excuse me, Resolution Number 3919, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of a County Resident to the Pension Oversight Commission for Anaronda County.
Okay, administration?
I hope my voice still works, I've been silent for a while.
I've been silent for a while. Kaylee Schultz from the county executive's office with me, as Christine Neder from the Office of Law. Resolution 3919 appoints county resident Sherri Vocell to the Pension Oversight Commission. She will serve the remaining term of Elizabeth Buck, who resigned earlier this year for family reasons, and her term would have expired January 31st of 2020. The administration would also like to extend Mrs. Vocell's appointment to serve a full term directly following the completion of Mrs. Buck's term to serve until January 31st of 2024. Currently, Mrs. Vocell is the Chief Financial Officer for Immediate Response Technologies LLC. She is a CPA and has been in the financial field since 1984. You should have her resume in front of you.
Thank you. Seeing no initial questions, let's open this up for public hearing. Anybody like to speak on 39, Resolution 3919? Seeing the overwhelming response, we will close the public hearing on Resolution 3019. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3919.
Resolution number 3919, Resolution confirming the appointment of a county resident to the Pension Oversight Commission for Anaronda County.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 3919.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy? Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstinent row call, Resolution 3919 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 4019.
Resolution number 4019, Resolution approving the appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anaronda County Retirement and Pension System.
Administration?
Kaylee Schultz, once again, from the county executive's office, Christine Neder from the Office of Law. Resolution 4019 reappoints Alan Hyatt to the Anaronda County Retirement and Pension System Board of Trustees to a three-year term ending December 1, 2021. Mr. Hyatt is the founding partner of the law firm Hyatt and Weber. He also serves as chairman and president of Severn Bank Incorporated and its subsidiaries, including Severn Bank. You should have his resume in front of you.
Okay, seeing no discussion, we open this public hearing on Resolution 4019. Anyone like to come forward? Once again, seeing the overwhelming movement in the audience, we're going to close the public hearing, Resolution 4019. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 4019.
Resolution number 4019, Resolution approving appointment to the Board of Trustees for Anaronda County Retirement and Pension System.
Councilman Volkey?
Ready to vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 4019.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.